Then we can kind of work on some other things and then get into the budget part. Once the computer is agreeable.
Just resend it.
Thank you.
Alright, so Rod, we're gonna be opening the meeting. Please everyone rise for the Pledge of Legions. Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you for coming in, everyone. Tonight's agenda, we'll be going over some fire department budget, renovation communications discussions, police department budget discussion. Hopefully make some type of decision on what type of COLA we're going to institute for 2023. Open up the sealed bids for Collins Road. And go over the holidays for the 2023 calendar year and getting some old and new business. So with that, thank you for coming in, Meredith.
I just set up here that I gotta use my computer. I won't bite your pants.
See if it map. Are you here?
Yeah, yeah. I'm just in the corner.
He's my communication guy.
Gotcha. Yes, we'll start on that communications discussion, Meredith.
I just printed out. So in order to talk about my budget, the first thing I wanted to talk about, you can have those if you want. First thing I wanted to ask about was, we got an update on the AFG grant that says that they are not making any decisions now till the end of December. Since this was originally supposed to be the summer, then it was September, then it was October, then it was the end of November, now it's the end of December. We're coming to the point where it affects my budget for next year as well. So what I'd like to ask, if you look at the top two sheets that I just gave out, it is the most recent quote for the communications package that we have put together for the AFG grant minus the base station, which has already come out of that. So it's a hundred and fifty one thousand dollars. What I'd like to ask is if I can get the selectmen to approve earmarking a hundred and fifty one thousand of the ARPA funds so that we can go ahead and begin the ordering process with this. Right now, the radios are between three to five months out before we'll get them. So if we can get the approval to earmark the ARPA funds, then we can start the process of ordering the radios. And then I'm hoping within that next three to five months, we will have an AFG decision. And if we get the AFG grant, you could, you would still have the capability to use those ARPA funds until 2025, I think is when you have to spend them by. The other thing that is does is, the first thing it does is it locks in the price for us. Right now, it's I think a fifteen percent increase every quarter that it's going to keep going up. If you take a hundred and fifty thousand dollars at fifteen percent every quarter, that's almost, that's just over the cost of two radios. Cause it's seven thousand dollars and change. So with, by locking the price in, we're gonna save that increase in prices as we keep going along. The other thing it does when we get to my budget is we have, because we haven't heard from AFG, we have put in four radios for next year at a cost of nine thousand and ninety one hundred dollars. That will take that out of my budget and reduce my budget by that much. So I'm looking to possibly get the ARPA funds so that we can start moving on this. So that would be my first question.
And they will not hold pricing. If we don't have an order in, they will increase pricing per Kenwood, which is the manufacturer.
And it's the manufacturer, not the company we're dealing with.
The company can't do anything. They've tried fighting it, but they just, pricing is pricing these days. So if we don't put an order in, we'll see another increase.
Okay. Alright.
There's a very high chance we're just not getting this grant. It's just.
That's kind of the way we're going is we're just not gonna end up getting the AFG grant. Now, if we do, it'd be a pleasant surprise, but if we don't, at least we're moving forward. Think as I've explained in the past, the radios that we're using were under the original interoperability grant, which was in two thousand and four, I think.
I think two or three.
Two thousand and three, maybe. Right after nine eleven, when they put everything into, everybody be on the same page. Our radios now are so far outdated that if they go out for repair, they come back, they can't repair them. Because they don't meet the, meet the standards anymore.
Yeah, which we've heard from, you know, EMD, police, everybody's in the same boat.
Yeah. And we should have been, and we will from now on, start looking at replacing things as we get a little closer. But, but it isn't something that any, anybody thought about at this point. So when it's just now trying to get back on an even page and then start marching forward to make plans for the future, so. So all I'm asking, I'm not asking to spend the money right now, I'm just asking to earmark the money so that we can go ahead, place the order, get the price locked in, begin the process of the three to five months so that they can get those in. And then in the meantime, hopefully we hear yes or no on the AFG grant.
Okay.
And some of this stuff, they said, some of the radios that we're looking to get aren't gonna be done until next July. So longer we wait, the farther behind we get in line of production. Cause right now, they're not touching anything until next March. So the further we wait in ordering, the less, you know, they're gonna care and push it out.
Yeah, just pushing, pushing it out. It's almost the same as what we were dealing with with the software.
Yeah, exactly.
It's exactly the same.
Last year and now, I wish we had it in place because we're having trouble with the old software and, yeah.
Yeah, so they just, they said there's no, no guarantee that you're gonna, the longer you wait, you're gonna, you're gonna get this done, so.
And this quote will.
Not to push you, but we just.
Well, no, up until this point, I would have never thought that we'd be in the scenario, wait a month, it's gonna cost you a year. But we've experienced that already.
It's a chip.
And this covers all of the portables, the replacement of all the mobiles. It's upgrading four of our portables to dual band so that we can work on a fire ground in Massachusetts cause we work quite a bit with Ashby these days. So this really does bring us totally up to speed, not just like piecemealing it together. It's, it's really putting together the program.
This is the whole package.
The whole package.
Oh yeah, this will replace all the radios and the trucks and all of our portables will get replaced. So we'll be good for however long these can last, which hopefully will be another ten to fifteen years, but who knows?
So we're good and then to start planning.
And then we, I think we should start doing something with a, a capital reserve type of thing where we start putting money away so we're not gonna get hit with another a hundred and fifty thousand or two hundred thousand dollar bill down the road when we have to start replacing them.
Yeah.
So if we can start planning now for the future, but also spend the money if we can do it now.
Yeah. Yeah, that makes sense.
Are these radios all, I guess I asked this before, totally compatible with the new radios that the police department's getting?
We can work it out.
We will, we will put their frequency right now on some of our radios. Cause my, my radio from, my chief's radio has been upgraded and my radio in my car have been upgraded so that I can talk to the police, but not all of our portables can. But we can, we just have to put the program in and it's all we have to do is put their frequency in, so yes.
So we'll be able to talk with the ambulance if need be, the police department and emergency management. Cause we're all be upgraded, we're all be, maybe different radios, but we're all be able to talk to each other.
Yeah, cause at this point, you know, the, all the emergency management gear is a complete overhaul and upgraded. Police departments are pretty much a complete upgrade.
Brand new.
Yeah, so this is a missing, the missing piece is our fire department.
It's a little expensive, but it's just a one hit and we're good to go. It's just.
Yeah, and then the, the, it's very important to start that plan from this point. You know, so in next year's warrant cycle, you know, we should look for, you know, some type of creating a capital reserve account for.
That's the plan is to create a capital, a communications capital reserve.
Or even fire equipment, maybe make it a little bit more general, so it's not so narrow.
Yeah, we do have a fire safety equipment, our person, personal safety equipment right now. But it does not cover the communications piece, cause we did look into that. But we can look in creating another one and, and just start putting, I really think we need to start putting money away. Cause even with the AFG grant, there's always gonna be a matching fee, so we're always gonna need something in that capital reserve.
Yeah, yeah. And the reason I say not, trying not to make it too narrow in scope.
Okay.
So we have some flexibility, cause some things you don't know.
Okay.
And then even as we've learned, there's just that pressure reducer. Wasn't there like some type of head that goes onto the pump truck? And that was a lot of money. You know, like I can't remember how many that.
Yeah, we're gonna get to that next.
So, but, so that we could utilize it for something like that too, because, and as we go, each piece of the equipment that you all need and use is very expensive. So we need some flexibility. We may not need to, or we may not know exactly what we're gonna need to use the money for. But we just know that, you know, the fire equipment as a whole is costly.
I'll work with Debbie and kind of come up with the wording for it that, that can encumber, encumber? No.
Encompass.
Encompass.
Encompass all of those different things. The only thing I don't wanna see it get used for is, you know, like little nickel and dime repairs and stuff. So it really should be designated for something, but yeah, we can work on that. That'd be great.
But then at the same time, like having these, those savings, those specific savings account is going to help in this whole budget process of the zero-based budget, cause that'll give us like the, those savings accounts essentially that we could draw off of for the unforeseen things.
Yep.
Yeah. With that being said, the, for our ARPA allocations, what we have left over was roughly two hundred and thirty four thousand dollars that we haven't allocated yet. So earmarking this money, it would fall right in line with, you know, one of the things, you know, top priorities that we'd have. I was hoping to be able to use it, utilize it in other areas. But if this grant's just not coming through, it's pretty important for, you know, our fire department to be able to communicate with the different agencies that they interact with. So I, I feel like it'd be a wise decision to earmark the ARPA, like that portion of ARPA money for these, this purpose. Do you have any thoughts?
Nothing additional.
Oh, okay. Um, so I'll make a motion to earmark one hundred and fifty one thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars of the ARPA money for the communications here for the fire department. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Thank you so much.
Worth facing.
Work on that.
You're not feeling good.
Okay, that's true.
Yeah.
So if we move into my budget, what that does under the line item for communications, which is the five thirty account, it reduces that by ninety one hundred dollars. Ninety one hundred and twenty dollars. And I think I would recommend that we take all of that out with the caveat that we're going to be creating that, that capital reserve account that would, this doesn't seem to be any reason to leave anything into next year's budget. Cause that capital reserve account would be there for anything that we need and which we shouldn't need with brand new radios. So I would like to just ask the finance committee or you guys, just, we will take that ninety one twenty out of, out of the communications line. Which is the five thirty account.
That's the one currently requesting seventeen thousand thirteen dollars?
Yes. Cause the rest of it is Comcast, US Cellular. We do have to replace a few pages and radios, pieces and parts and then, so yes, that, that will reduce that down to just whatever, and I'm just gonna put minus ninety one.
What was the reduction amount again, Meredith?
The reduction amount is going to be ninety one twenty, nine thousand one hundred and twenty dollars.
Okay.
Then we do the capital reserve account. Is there a way to make it so we can go to it through the selectmen instead of you really?
We'll make it an ex, we'll write it as an expendable.
Okay.
Yes, it'll reserve, yeah. As far as the rest of my budget, we did talk a little bit, since you brought up the front suction piece. We did put in our budget last year, ten thousand dollars to have that fixed.
Same I say, I thought, bet that was addressed, but.
We did, we got an estimate from the company, we put that into the budget, the budget was approved. And what happened was when they did a deep dive into it, it cannot be done. The way they rigged the front suction on the truck is too close, there's, there's not enough space to put in what we need. They could have gotten in and tried to jerry rig something, they didn't, couldn't give us an exact cost on what it would be and if it would even work. So we elected not to do that. But rather, what I would like to do is if you look at the new equipment in the budget for next year. I think it's new equipment. It is. The thermal camera, ten thousand six hundred and fifty four dollars. Our thermal imaging camera that's in the rescue right now is on its last legs. So I, I'm planning on taking that ten thousand dollars that would have been used for the front suction cause we are never gonna be able to do it anyway. So it's not like I'm gonna come back next year and say, oh, just kidding, I want another ten thousand dollars. I'd like to use that ten thousand dollars to take that thermal imaging camera. We can get it at, at a cost now that won't be an increase. And then I can take that ten thousand dollars out of my budget as well, which would reduce my budget for next year by another ten thousand dollars.
Now that front suction, can it be moved to another location?
No, we have a side mount suction as well.
Oh, you do? Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Originally, we had looked at the front mount suction, it was gonna be easy. It's easier for us to get into some dry hydrants and stuff, but they really, they took it, they kept it for a full day, looked at all the different angles, took pictures of it and everything, and it just can't be done. So it's gonna be a training thing for us on flooding that front suction, keeping water in it so that it, cause right now, when you draw off the side suction, you're drawing the air from that front suction. We were hoping to put that valve in there that would eliminate that. We're gonna have to do it by just flooding that with water in order to keep that, not having to draw so much air.
Or you can't just cap it off?
If it came to that, we, that would be our next thing would be to cap it off. Right now, we're gonna try and keep utilizing it and just do some really good training on making sure there's water in that front suction. Cause I hate to lose it.
So I apologize, I was making some notes, so there's nothing that can be done at all?
Go ahead. Nothing that can be done at all.
That's what I thought I heard. Okay.
So I would like to take that thermal imaging camera, cause we can get that this year, which is the ten thousand dollars. And then that would again, reduce my budget for next year by another ten thousand dollars. Just trying to save money. So that's my plan for that. Other than that, I didn't know if anybody had any questions about the budget.
Just to make sure I'm tracking with you, Meredith, is that the one, that line that you requested fourteen thousand three fifty? I'm sorry, I don't.
No, it's the seven forty account. It's.
Yeah.
It's the one that says twenty five thousand zero zero four. And it's ten thousand, it says thermal camera, ten thousand six fifty four. And I do have a little bit of the extra in, I'm not worried about, I won't go over my budget because I have a little bit of training money left as well. One thing we found this year that's been very interesting is things like maintenance, things that require people to do actual work things have been hard to get people to do, cause staffing on a lot of these companies is so thin that some maintenance and training and things like that, we've got a little bit extra in our training budget, a little bit extra in our maintenance budget.
Okay.
I don't see the thermal camera.
Should be in the seven forties, equipment new and replacement.
Should be one of the last pages.
Yeah, I have on this.
I noticed on the spreadsheet, they didn't go in order of the.
So these two are the seven forty.
Yeah, so there's ten thousand.
Six fifty four.
Yep, right there. Yep, that one.
Deleted.
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah, don't go deleting, just, yeah.
Yeah, don't go deleting.
What? We haven't decided if we're gonna like do that.
Well, so long as I don't go over my budget, I can do that, right?
Well, you can request to have that done.
May I have permission to do that?
We'd like to take money.
To benefit, I, I would like to spend the money that was given to us by the taxpayers to reduce the money that I'm asking from the taxpayers for next year. Please.
Yeah, that makes sense. We're trying to get in the habit of returning the change, so to speak, each year.
Yeah.
So that's why I just wanted to be able to have a discussion and where it's ten thousand dollars.
And I am a little concerned with, I mean, the camera is marginally working right now. But you know, when you put it on, I know we're supposed to put like our number one, number two, number three priorities. To put it on like a second or third priority, I don't, I, I would be surprised if we make it into next year without the screen going out on it. It's the oldest one we have, so it is really one that needs to be replaced.
Oh, so it is a priority then?
Yeah.
Okay.
Cause originally I had it on as, yeah, we could probably do without it, but recently we've been having troubles with the screen and stuff, so. It, it truly is on its last legs. Its batteries don't last. But if I could spend it this year, that would reduce my budget, which is something I'm trying to do too.
Yeah.
So the ten sixty four, six fifty four is going away. And it's gonna be ten thousand for a thermal imaging camera.
Only if they approve it. No, no, no. It's gonna go away. It's gonna come out of the budget if the selectmen approve it.
Cause she had ten thousand dollars budgeted for that front suction.
I'm gonna spend it this year and spend it next year.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Which just seems to, like in this case, makes sense. What are your thoughts, Lou?
Same.
Alright, yeah, so we'll make that shift.
Okay. And then the only other things I'd point out and then I'll ask if you have any questions is we did move to hourly pay this year. And we are right on track. So it looks like that has, I did not increase the budget for next year as far as salaries and stipends just because it looks like, you know, if we go up and double our call volume, that might change it. But we pretty much status quo the way we've been over the last couple of years. I know that the selectmen were a little nervous about us going to an hourly rate and what that would do to our budget. But right now, we're right on track. After six months, we'll be pretty much even with what we would have been with stipends. So I've been pretty pleased with that. Questions on my budget? I know you wanna know my second priorities and stuff, but.
Well, yeah, from what, you know, we had spoken earlier, it didn't sound like you had thought you had a lot of seconds or thirds. The only thing that you had stated was that thermal imager, but was there anything else?
No, the only other thing I can, I can tell you might come out of the budget, but I don't know for sure yet, is under the five sixty account, which is dues and fees. The Sahhegan Mutual Fire Aid Association, thousand dollar fee. We've talked about this a couple of years now, trying to take it to Keene to be our hazmat team. Two years ago, I brought it and was talking about getting rid of that thousand dollar fee because we can go to Keene for nothing. Then we were kind of waiting for them to get a new fire chief. They have a new fire chief. I have literally been trying to get ahold of him for three months. Emails, phone calls, I will be seeing him this Thursday at a meeting. So if all I need from him is a yes, we can go to them for our hazmat. Cause the state requires that we designate a hazmat team. And it used to fall under county lines and now it doesn't matter anymore, so long as we have a designated hazmat team. If we go to Keene, there would be no cost. If we stay with Sahhegan, it's a thousand dollars. So I should have an answer on that on Thursday, and if so, then that would come down another thousand dollars.
Look at you saving money everywhere. That's why we have.
Sorry, Mike. Sorry, Mike. Mike's not gonna speak to me.
For a mere one hundred and fifty one thousand, I could save you a thousand dollars.
Yeah, but I've just saved twenty one thousand.
Yeah, no, it's definitely looking good, cause that's, I actually put you guys below last year's request, so.
Yeah, and we look a lot higher just because of our dispatch, but that's because that dispatch went into our budget as opposed to your budget, so. That fifty seven thousand.
Can I ask you one thing? And it's in topic, but slightly off topic. Think about all the different capital reserve funds that you would like so that we can go ahead and, you know, spot money for each one of them.
Okay.
To ensure that, that you're covered over whatever period.
Yeah, I think we're gonna have to look at, now that I've saved you money, I think we're gonna have to look at increasing probably the capital reserve for the trucks, for the apparatus. And potentially, we can take a look at the gear stuff, but, but yeah. And then the only one we really would like to add would be that communications one.
Yeah, so if you can, you know, describe what you want each one of those to be.
Okay.
And, and then put some detail in that.
Okay.
That's funny. I said less detail, you said more.
Somewhere in the middle.
Broader description. You want, he wants a description and broader.
Inflation.
There you go, yeah.
Inflation.
Yeah, inflation accounts.
So my, if I had to do a second, I did look today after you and I talked, on the four thirty three account, if I had, if we had to have a second or third priority, it would be that computer. Or, you know, it would be nice to have it for next year, but.
Right now, you're doing pretty good?
Just leave it the way it is.
Yeah.
Let it ride. Alright, I'm good.
Do you want that computer to stay number two?
Yep.
A number two priority?
Is that what it is right now?
Yeah.
Yep.
Four thirty three?
That's where I would like it to stay.
Okay.
Other than that, that's about it, unless somebody else has questions.
So I'm sorry, what did you wanna do with that fourteen hundred dollars?
Leave it the way it is as a priority two.
And then the salaries?
Stay the same.
Salaries show, I looked at the spreadsheet and the salaries show the same as last year, waiting for the COLA adjustment.
Okay.
That was only in my slide thing and I took it out.
Oh, okay.
I did show a discrepancy in two different line items, and I wasn't exactly sure between my PowerPoint and and the printout that came from Mitch.
Gear cleaning highlighted?
No.
Is that a discrepancy?
I don't understand. I saved it and I earmarked it with red, trying to figure out where I put it.
I thought I saw it on the, on the email.
Might be fire summary. Oh, here it is. Fire vehicle. So I show a discrepancy in the fire dues account, fire dues sub.
What's that, fire what?
Subscription and fees. I have.
Can you scroll up on that? Yeah, so I can. Don't click on anything, just scroll. Roll the ball. Other way.
I have three thousand eight hundred and fifty five and the spreadsheet that I got from Mitch shows three hundred, four hundred, three thousand four hundred and thirty five.
Which, what line item are you looking at?
That is the five sixty account.
That's the dues subs.
Yep, dues subs and fees.
Thirty four, thirty five, and you had what?
I have thirty eight fifty five.
Can't be increasing now.
Well, I don't, I was just saying there's a discrepancy.
Didn't save, just read, adjust it.
We gotta put the, you gotta make it sound good. We took the money away.
Doesn't say one that might go down by a thousand bucks anyway.
That's right.
So that's to be adjusted to thirty eight fifty five.
Yeah, and then the fire vehicle maintenance. I showed, and I don't know if it's just a math thing, I showed seventeen seven fifty and the spreadsheet shows seventeen thousand. So that is the four thirty two account. Fire vehicle, so that one shows seventeen thousand, it should be seventeen thousand seven fifty, unless my math is wrong.
Why did that go down?
I don't think it went.
It went from thirty three thousand eight hundred in the prior year to seventeen thousand in.
One of them was because of that ten thousand dollar suction.
Okay, good.
And a couple of lighting projects that were replaced on the vehicles that don't have to be done again this year, so.
No, you're right, it's seventeen seven fifty.
Yep. So sorry, I gotta take back a little bit of the money I gave to you. So that should be seventeen seven fifty. And then otherwise, all the other line items matched what I had in my budget as well. That's it, that's all I got. That's it, that's all I got.
That's line four thirty-two? Do you want me to change that seven fifty one?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'll do it after. That's my saved copy. That is not my master copy.
It looks like that computer might come off.
So far, I'm, so far, I'm still happy though, see?
Yeah.
Radios. Yeah.
Radio, radio.
I'm okay. Communications, I'm good. Anything else?
And the helping, the three fifty, that's a priority two also, twenty-three ninety. Alton Fitness.
Oh, yeah. That was a priority two. That's the cleaning on gear.
Well.
But he told me just leave stuff the way it was.
Yeah.
Cause I did so good on saving mine.
Well, is that a true number two? The cleaning of the gears, it's a part of every day.
What it is, is it's an additional cleaning, um, it's a deep dive cleaning into all of the gear, in addition to what we do at the station with the, with the extractor and the dryer. Um, so Cody can tell you how much, what was the percentage of extra stuff that came out when they did that additional cleaning?
I don't remember the, the percentage, but it was a significant amount. Uh, it also includes an annual inspection that's required per NFPA.
So that's a number one. You don't wanna change, cause it's not really a choice. Cause the number twos and threes are.
Okay.
You should look at as being able to work without having them all together. Um, and that sounds like it's something that, you know, is required or needed, so.
Okay. And we didn't put it in for, we only put it in for the guys who really truly do interior work, that would get that extra. Carbon stuff and everything in their gear to kinda take it out, so. You know, average driver, not average driver, drivers are very important, but the drivers or, or someone like me that's not in the building a lot. My gear wouldn't be included in that, so we tried to keep the cost down on that. So, alright, yeah, we moved that back to one. I'm okay with that.
Yeah, well, cause it's a true representation of what it takes.
Okay.
You know, to operate the department, and with that um inspection annually.
Right.
You know.
Which is required.
Keeps the gear up, yeah.
Okay. I'm good with that.
Yeah. So let's be careful um going forward, what is put as twos and threes. Uh, cause right now, we're really looking at those twos and threes as, you know, shifting all of those off.
Okay.
Uh, the different budgets, uh, because, in order to keep.
Okay. Yeah, and I don't think I really understood what the difference was between all of those, but I think, I understand what you're saying.
Okay.
Yeah, I can do that. That's it.
Sweet.
Lou, did you have any additional questions from Meredith while she was here?
No.
I don't have anything else.
Nothing with the red.
I'm not done with the um renovation cost thing yet.
Okay.
Yeah, so I'll try to get that done as soon as possible.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. See, that was easy.
Be careful. Allergers, tea? I bought it from my.
Yeah, now we're in the mode of like, getting money off the budget.
I saved twenty-five for you.
Yeah.
See you guys. Thanks, Meredith. Good night.
Bye, thank you.
Yep.
So while we're setting up, uh, we don't have any printouts, it's pretty complex, it's gonna be hard to print out, we'll wanna talk through, so hopefully it's gonna work out on the screen.
Are you kidding us? Were you handling?
I'm trying to do it here, but I don't know if I got everything.
Okay.
Everybody cross check each other.
Perfect.
So Mike had a, a good start in the budget. Uh, so uh, when, when we kicked this off, we went through uh everything that he'd had in the budget prior years. Uh, kinda built up, you know, looked at, said, do we need that, and then built up from there. Uh, we added um a lot of detail around it, things that uh, that weren't really clear, which is a line item of like two thousand dollars for, for uh, you know, police equipment, for example, so. Uh, we said, well, really, what does that entail? Uh, built up a lot of data around that, saying, what do the officers have, what do the cars have, so forth, built that up. And then figured out what has to be uh supplied on an annual basis, or is there a life cycle, you know, five years, for example. Uh, put together a spreadsheet that goes over uh pretty much the whole, the whole department. Uh, we, it's, it's a work in progress, so the stuff we shared a month ago is different, different today, so. Uh, even this morning, we made a few more changes. Uh, over the past couple of weeks, Mike's been able to reduce a lot of the budget, so that was good. Uh, today, discussion went the wrong way, we had to revisit the fuel uh consumption of vehicles, so it went up just a little bit. Uh, but we'll go through that in detail. We have a, a simple summary, I'm gonna call it simple, I think it's simple. Uh, it's a simple summary spreadsheet that talks about the line items, uh, where we were in twenty-one, twenty-two, where we wanted to be in twenty-three. Uh, it highlights areas where we're, where we're higher than last year, uh, and, and that's red. If it's lower than last year, it's green. Most of them are negligible. Anywhere we're significantly higher, there's a, a note in there, so Mike's gonna walk through that. Uh, talk through why it's higher, what that entails. And then there's a, there's uh recommended additions, uh desirable additions. Uh, and then there's a little bit of information about the, the potential illegal officers as well. So Mike will walk through all that.
Okay.
Do you wanna put that?
Yeah, I'm gonna, that's what I was gonna ask, if you guys would like it up there, we can make that happen.
So the spreadsheet that Mike has also has all the data behind it, so the worksheet we go through. Uh, if, if there's something that's there, we can jump to it, and the worksheet provides all the detail, and we can talk through that as well.
Okay.
Do you wanna drive this?
No, let's take a second.
Do you want me to?
Do you wanna drive it?
Uh, I'm gonna reduce the fire budget and just bring you up a copy of what we're gonna be looking at.
Okay.
That mirrors what I have on that screen, so uh, I'll get it up for you, that's what I'm asking, do you, do you want me to just, please get it, run it, get it up for you?
Alright, yeah, I was gonna ask if you wanted to.
Uh, I, I probably sit over there.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, I'm gonna close out of this fires. Is that good?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Save changes now?
Yes, save.
Was that a copy you made that you were working out with?
No, it was.
Yeah, she should have.
That was rule number one.
I know.
So I don't know which one this is.
It's that. Yeah, I can't use those rolly paddle things. I need a mouse.
I don't have a laptop.
No.
No. It's kinda funny.
Must be nice to be able to say though, I know.
Yeah.
Alright, so this is what I have up on my screen as well. Do you want me to sit over there?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Joe, hit the light behind that door, right here, like on this side.
On here. Kinda like my house, every light's switching behind the door.
Yeah, there you go.
There we go, now we can see it.
So if I'm free to speak for a moment, um.
You have the floor.
I just wanted to thank the Finance Advisory Committee. Um, it's been new to all of us, we've been trying. We, we are learning the, the new way of doing things um as we go. It's been successful so far. To be frank, you know, the Finance Advisory Committee has put a ton of work into this, I'm sure more than I have. Um, so they've done a good job. Thank you to everybody that's committed to the town. Um, Joe and I have worked very closely with this, he's been uh very um. Giving me the instructions on how the, these spreadsheets work, and uh, I'm definitely not a spreadsheet expert, but. Um, he's made it uh simplified. Whenever I have a question, he answered them, and I appreciate all of Joe's help. Um, I, I would not be able to do this on my own, as far as this level. So it was really up the Joe's creation, so thank you.
And kinda eye opening too, right?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it, it. It is eye opening. I really appreciate the, the theory of letting the Finance Advisory Committee kinda jump into the budget. And let them realize what some of the true expenses could be to run a department in the town. Um, and I didn't use any influence as far as trying to inflate the budget or decrease the budget, to let them work with the numbers that we have. We predicted potentially inflation, you know, for twenty twenty-three, which we all know is probably one of the biggest issues that we face. Um, as a, a town. Um, and, you know, let, let, kinda let them run with that, so we could get numbers that aren't being skewed or influenced in a particular direction. Um, so this is kinda where we are right at the moment.
Excellent.
Yep, and uh, I will be switching between glasses, cause my progressive glasses broke, and uh, so, using readers. Doing my, the best I can here, so.
Yeah.
Um, as, you know, Mr. Woodworth had pointed out there, in this summary, um, we have. Some items in the um row of K, if it can be seen on the screen. Where we have either an increase or a decrease. So red would be an increase into the budget, is that correct, Joe?
Yes.
And green is a negative or reduced cost to the line item. Um, and if you have any particular thing, I think we could probably tackle it from the top down, if you guys think that's best.
Yeah, might as well start right at the top and. Go right down, and you know, I'm happy to be going over the budget uh with you. It was as it stood with all, like the ones, twos and threes, like all in there.
Yep.
Um, the numbers that we had a week ago, you know, put you at roughly a thirty-six percent increase, and that was, granted, that was full, like the full boat.
Right.
Yeah, um, but then even just knocking it down to priority ones, uh, to about thirteen percent.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's um. If uh, Joe can remind me, but this, as it says in the, in the J column, um, it is the minimums of what we're looking at, kind of for twenty twenty, twenty-three. Uh, so we'll go off on the, the full-time salaries reduced by eleven thousand and change. Um, so, so I'll again, I'm sorry, Mike, I'll interrupt you. Just high level, right now we're at six point seven five percent over the twenty twenty-two budget. So, and uh, we'll, we'll get, talk more about that in a bit. So. Yeah, and in, and one of the things we will highlight as we move forward is, there's been, you know, some sideline conversations about staffing numbers. And uh, adding, potentially adding officers, so I, we'll talk about that a little bit. And, you know, inside this um power, uh spreadsheet is, you know, numbers that would reflect what that would cost.
Okay.
So that's already in there?
Um, yeah, if we slide over to the right, we can go and see other budgets.
Oh.
With those numbers in it.
Cool.
Okay. Uh, so I think, I'm not exactly sure what the. The full scope of the meeting was today, so I, I think this is the best place to start, is at the minimums.
Yeah, yeah, that'd be good to get that baseline.
Yep, and in part-time salaries. Um, we, we budgeted in four thousand three hundred and thirty-five in twenty twenty-two, and uh, with, with a slight increase to four thousand six hundred and ninety. Police prosecutor line, um, which is line one thirteen. I already had the meeting with the prosecutor this year, and that line is going to stay flat. Uh, so that we should be looking exactly the same figure as last year.
Okay.
Overtime budget, there was an increase of six thousand seven hundred dollars, that's basically to cover vacation time, sick time, personal time and liabilities. Now that we're fully staffed, and we have uh officers with the personal time off and vacation, sick time, there's a potential that the, you know. There's shifts that will need to be covered, an increased number of shifts based on that, and that also is. Uh, when we have officers go out for training and there's a shift that's, needs to be filled, you know, it's put out to either part-time and uh full-time officers to fill the shift, which is covered by overtime.
Mike, let me interject a question. There was no budget amount for that in twenty twenty-two for the overtime. Is that correct?
Uh, no, we were budgeted twenty-three thousand for twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, which, I'm not sure what you're looking at, Dennis, but I have um printouts from, that we did last week.
Yeah.
And it shows the twenty-three thousand in your master.
I may be missing a line, I'm looking in a dark area and my eyes are not.
That's the twenty-two budget.
My work.
Do I think, um, uh. Like more or less, the, like your master one is done by alphabetical order.
Yeah.
So it's down, like, so it's just listed different than here.
That's probably what my problem is.
Yeah.
Yep.
Um, we have court labor gone up by fifty, fifty-five dollars. That's just an adjustment to potential increase in salary. Uh, or the average overtime um rate, if you would average everybody out.
I, I know where the difference is, that's listed as uh part or category two, twenty-three thousand overtime.
Um.
And it just got moved to priority one.
Oh, I got you, yeah, it's definitely.
That's what happened.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
There was a master, okay, I got it. I'm with you there.
And we do have a new line item, um, that we uh came together, we had some meetings in the past with the board about incentives. So we added a, a police incentives line, which is row nine of the spreadsheet. I think it should be actually twenty-five fifty, um, and this is just one of the incentives. We talked about having that longevity incentive. We had a conversation about the PT incentive, we had a conversation about the educational incentive, but this particular one is just the longevity stipend or incentive.
Mm-hmm.
And which we labeled as a priority one, um, and we labeled the other ones that were, uh, spoke about. Trying to be reasonable as, um, you know, the priority two or three suggested.
Yeah.
Um. And hoping that maybe, you know, we'll get lucky and have a, um, get some of our suggested or desirables, but we'll see how that goes.
So then even, you know, the benefit to having the uh twos and threes, like out there as well. Is it kinda gives us an idea where you would like to take the department even next year, the year after.
Right.
So we can just start, it's like a plan, like a long-term planning, so to speak.
Yeah, it's normal.
Yep, yeah.
That, that's how I kinda explained it to Meredith.
Yeah, yeah, it, yes, sir. And, and you know, I'm not, I'm, I'm reasonable to the point where, you know, I understand that, you know. We can bui- we can build projects and do them in steps and phases, and I'm open to those options. Health insurance, so a lot of these line items that we're coming into now are pretty much fixed items that, you know, they're gonna go off a number supplied to us for insurance. Uh, whether it's gonna be health, dental, life, um, and then we get down to some of the other uh taxes, if you will, FICA Medicaid, and then our retirement system.
Mm-hmm.
Um, insurance, there was a large increase there based upon, um, what was budgeted in twenty twenty-two. We have officers that didn't take insurance last year, um, or officer that's going to take insurance this year. Uh, so that's gonna add, whatever, you know, that plan's gonna add, is obviously, obviously gonna increase our, um. Health insurance line, so some of that increases uh based upon that, and then also, I believe, just the cost or whatever the. Um, annual premium is for the healthcare. I think that might be able to type that.
And then, if you have a family plan, that's way more money than a single, or a, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's kinda to be expected with a fully staffed department.
Right. Yep.
With that go up.
And then, looks like the dental is probably gonna go down by about twelve hundred and thirty-nine dollars, based upon current numbers. Down about twenty-seven dollars on our life insurance, uh, which is offered again by the town, and then there's the same contribution split, I believe, on that, eighty-five fifteen. Um, eighty-five percent the town pays, and then fifteen percent to the employee.
Then the life, the life insurance is every employee pays four dollars?
Okay.
And then the whole rest, so we pay for one month, and then the eleven months the town pays for.
Okay, gotcha.
It's four dollars a month for each employee.
So it's even smaller percentage of that, yeah.
Yeah.
Medicare is based upon the fixed number by the federal government, and the retirement is gonna be based on the fixed number. Uh, set by legislation and the New Hampshire retirement system.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we have two groups, group one, group two, in which employees of the New York Switch Police Department participate. Um, we have two groups, group one, group two, in which employees of the New York Switch Police Department participate in. So group two is police fire EMS, group one would be um, municipal employees, which is my um, police administrator, which is Kelly. Also, um, all full-time employees in the New York Switch Police Department participate in the Hampshire retirement system. Um, based upon a reduction in salaries, um, from years past till now, we're gonna go down by about four thousand seven hundred and forty-five dollars. A reduction in that line. Uh, police education, uh, which is also known as police training in the twenty twenty-two budget. Looks like a seventy-five dollar increase. Um, I really recommend that this go to about seven thousand dollars, right now we're we're about sixty-seven hundred dollars spent in twenty twenty-two. And uh, with the cost of classes going up and then the cost associated with classes is not going down, that's for sure.
That's education?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, line two forty. Uniforms, how am I doing, Joe?
You said sixty?
You're doing great.
Yeah.
Sixty-seven hundred?
Uh, yes, correct, oh, no, seven thousand, I think.
Oh, sorry, sorry, right.
Yeah, we're at sixty-seven hundred and twenty-four dollars spent today on training. Um, if you, you know, like training is, you know, it's buying the ammunition to be on the range, it's buying the gear to be on the range, it's going to classes. Uh, you know, there's a lot to it, it's not just um, sending somebody to a class, it's also the 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 practical stuff that we do out on the range and keeping up with all the supplies for that. Um, it could even include buying new plywood for the, for the uh, targets that we shoot, you know, we eventually wear them out and they uh, have to be replaced, the two-by-fours, the four-by-fours.
Yeah.
So there's a lot of stuff also on the range that's included under the training.
And a lot of that is required, isn't it?
Damn. Most of it's required, yeah, yeah, we're mandated to do X amount of training per year and it's increasing every year under the um, LIAC. So it's the Law Enforcement Accountability Act and Training, so um, since twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-four, they're in- increasing the amount of training. We went from eight hours three years ago to it's gonna be mandated that we do uh, no less than twenty-four.
Wow.
Right, so as an agency, we've always strived to get our officers forty hours a year in continuing education, and that's in all aspects of training. Not including time on the range.
Okay.
Cause of the academy doesn't include defensive tactics, firearms qualifications and training and first aid as you're continuing it, they're like, no, that's stuff you need to do. We're not gonna take that as hours credited towards your mandate. Uh, but as an agency, we strive for forty hours and especially now with having a very juvenile agency, so we have a lot of inexperienced officers. They need more training than somebody that might be on the job eight or ten years where they're like, oh, I did that class, got that class, did that training. These guys are all eager to learn the, you know, you know, whatever new concept there that the agency needs. Whether it's sex assault investigations, you know, um, basic criminal investigations, burglaries, you know, domestic violence investigations. It can be quite um, in-depth, and we try to tailor our officers based upon some of their strengths and our needs in a direction that would benefit both the agency and the officer.
Yeah.
Um, so there's a lot to be learned over the years to come, um, with some of the newer officers.
Now, in that education line, um, in the baseline is like, I can understand that the seven thousand. But then I see where there's some twos and threes in that subcategory, uh, that would have brought that up to around like the ninety-two something?
Uh, I can slide over, yeah. Correct, ninety-two, twenty-five, yeah, yeah, so that's, you know, funding everything we would desire.
Yeah.
So that's in the column Z.
But, so you've gone through this though pretty thoroughly and you're, like if you only got the baseline, that would be sufficient?
Um, so I think the way we ju- chose to present it today was just to make sure that we knew what our minimums were.
Okay.
Right, and we obviously would like to have further conversation about, um, the, um, you know, the twos and threes, the desirables and the and the, um, other, um, suggested line items or.
So on that, like that ranking topic, do you feel comfortable with how you have things ranked now, like with the twos and threes, having worked through it?
Yeah, I think we're pretty comfortable.
Okay.
Would you wanna push that line, the seven thousand over? Would you rather make that a priority one?
Um.
I think that's what you were getting at, right?
No, no, it was the additional, cause there's, so what we're seeing right here is all the baseline and stuff, so I was just trying to gauge
Right.
where your twos and threes were, whereas Meredith wasn't quite clear on what a two or a three really was, like what that concept was. So I just wanted to make sure I asked that you, you know, you're fully comfortable and understand like what the twos and threes are, cause it's, those are truly optional items, right?
So they're suggested, we would like to get those, yeah, that's a strong, yeah, that's those s- suggested ones.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, so I I think the six thousand dollars we went through and said that's the minimum, the department's gonna survive with the six thousand dollars. We'd like to put another thousand dollars into it, um, you know, to be more comfortable. There's some senior level training that that Mike wanted, wanted to do, wanted to include, uh, that's in the suggestion thing, so uh, you know, we can talk about that in a few minutes.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll finish up the minimums and we'll go back and.
Yeah, and like I said, we've already spent over the six thousand this year and, um, thanks, this is a bare minimum. We, we definitely move on from that, to be frank, you know what I mean, like that's, it's um, also to keep up with the the requirements, you know, by the by the, by the state, by legislation, you know. We definitely need to have more money to make sure that we're getting our minimums. It's in, most of the classes that we attend are obviously fee-based.
Yeah.
And we have to, nine to nine percent of the time, they're off-site and they're, you know, being offered by a third party or a private company. Um, and and again, those costs are going up, including, um, one of the things that our agency really hasn't, haven't done in the past is we haven't done a lot of force on force, meaning that we make, we, our training becomes much more reality-based. Meaning that, um, this year we actually acquired what we call simmunitions, pistols and gear, so we can actually now train where we actually shoot rounds at each other, wearing the safety gear and we get hit with, which is kind of equivalent to a paintball, but more sophisticated. Um, and in the past, this agency's never trained that way. So we shoot at basically, uh, you know, stagnant tag, targets on the range that don't move, don't react, don't shoot back, don't fight back.
Yeah.
And uh, one of the things I'd like to see the agency do is to really up its training in the level, uh, officers and how they would respond to real resistance in real scenarios, and we've never done that as an agency and, you know, with the with the demand from legislation, oh, we need better trained officers, this is something we absolutely need to do, right? Like we, we need to be in the, in the wor- in the law enforcement, we call it pre-wired, I mean, like I need to not experience everything the first time in the field, I should be learning some of how to respond to some of that stuff in training.
Yeah.
And it's really hard unless you really put people in a, in a reality situation where they're met with real force. And when you get hit by these, um, they're called simmunition rounds, they're flying about three hundred feet per second, so they hurt. So there is a penalty, right, so, um, yeah, but we wear the, you know, the protective gear and and, you know, full face mask you, you know, the yoke around the neck, so you, you know, and, you know, groin protection and all that stuff, but if you get hit in the arm or legs and stuff like that, it really hurts. But it also brings home to you like how easy it is to be in a conflict and get, get shot, right, without using proper techniques and proper tactics, you know, so I don't wanna get too far into that, but
Yeah.
that, that kind of training is expensive, that's the reality of it. Um, the, the, the ammunition cost equal or is more is a real round, is is a regular, you know, projectile made out of lead. And it's just, to me, it's, I've been through quite a bit of simmunitions training in my career and and it's some of the best training I've ever attended, period.
Yeah.
As far as, you know, honing your tactics, honing your skills, your marksmanship, um, and then being able to respond without uh, too much terror and too much, uh, um, concern that you might not perform under stress.
Yeah.
You know, so, but it's expensive, and like I said, we, we're trying to move in that direction and we need the budget to do that.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I think we're, Doug can too deep into this, you know, line two ninety, which is the police uniforms. We were budgeted three thousand in twenty twenty-two, uh, the minimum for twenty-three is about forty-three hundred.
I do, I, I do wanna comment that uh, a week ago we were at nine grand for that, so Mike spent a lot of time going through and figuring out what the condition of all the uniforms are and the badges and so forth and he was able to knock that down to more than half, so, good job, Mike.
Thank you. So the, the equipment, especially, you know, twenty twenty-two, we spent way over the, the budgeted amount because of the new officers and getting them fully equipped with new equipment. Um, I think we can do a little bit more deep dive into this, Joe, right, as we move, if we can come back and visit it?
Yep.
Um, I'm down on police equipment, it's two thousand dollars, a more accurate budget and plans is, you know, th- thirty-five, hmm, what does it say, thirty-five, sixty-five. It's about fifteen hundred, sixty-five dollars more, again, we have a lot of justification for this, um, with, obviously, um, inflation being um, one of the most, uh, top reason why the numbers go up.
Mm-hmm.
Vehicle maintenance. Let's see what we got here. Sixty-seven hundred dollars and uh, the minimum would be seven thousand thirty-five, going up by three hundred and thirty-five dollars. Um, again, the cost of just getting any maintenance done on the vehicles has gone up significantly. This year, we're basically right on target this year from what was budgeted for twenty twenty-two. And we don't even have any cars that took a significant amount of maintenance, this is like tires, brakes, windshield wipers, oil changes.
Yeah.
Um, we did have, um, an exhaust system replaced in one cruiser, the o- the oldest one we have. Um, and a rear bumper that wouldn't pass inspection because it rusted out, so they uh, that wa- that was over a thousand dollars. But it doesn't take much if you had a significant, um, uh, repair on one of the vehicles.
Right.
Um, luckily, half of our fleet is still under warranty, um, but they're aging now, so we have twenty-twenty's, those are our newest vehicles. We have two twenty-twenty-two, two twenty-twenty's, uh, which are still for the most part under warranty. But I anticipate in twenty twenty-three, they, based on mileage, they will go out of warranty.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and so we, we have to be careful to make sure that we budget enough to cover those expenses. We're spending between a thousand and fifteen hundred dollars a year on tires alone and then all the other maintenance. PD communication, this is a new, um, this is newly added, I think I R Chief Lund mentioned that she, uh, had the communication added into the budget. Joe was able to go back and kind of put it in last year's budget, so it didn't have a significant impact on this year's budget, show somewhat of a, an offset.
Yeah.
And we, we haven't got a number from Hillsborough County Dispatch at this time, historically it's been around twenty-five thousand two fifty. But this is anticipation of inflation. So there might be a potential for, you know, five or seven thousand dollars coming off of that.
So that has been updated, cause it's not on these sheets that we got as of last week, that, I'm not off the newest copy, but
Right.
that was in there?
Yeah.
A question, there was some talk about changing over from Hillsborough?
Yes, sir.
Dispatch?
Yeah, and uh, basically.
With that twelfth flat on its face?
Yeah, and I, I, I had conversations with Hollis PD who has their own in-house dispatch, and we were looking at, uh, yes, so short answer is yes, I went to Hollis to see if they would offer, um, first one, could they handle us in our call volume? So I put together a, a five-year average for them of our calls, types of calls, arrests. And um, long story short, they looked at it and they're like, we don't have the manpower to support it.
Okay.
Yeah, so that essentially uh, is a no-go at this point. Um, they did say we could revisit in the future, they, um, their manpower is, just like everybody else, just like we could, they can't stay fully staffed. Um, so they're just like, we can't barely keep the doors open, uh, so that, it's not something they can handle. Where are we at now, so we're, uh, dues and fees is flatlined, eleven hundred and twenty-five dollars, I think that can stay where it's at. Um, don't think we have to increase that if we're getting by fine. General surprise, about three thousand, that's largely inflation, um, just to buy anything, whether it's from uh, paper, pencils, pens.
Hmm.
Um, you know, um, if you need an office chair or, you know, that includes all our toner cartridges, um, anything you can imagine in the office. Um, so it's a pretty, pretty lean and in, uh, it's been two thousand dollars since two thousand fifteen. Um, and I think the year before that, two thousand fourteen, it was a thousand dollars, uh, so it's been two thousand dollars for, for quite some time. Animal controls on another budget, electricity, this is a big one, um. Last year we budgeted three thousand, as of today, we're at four grand. Um, and that's not gonna include, uh, taking over that additional space that we just leased, um, which is, that used to be Bellows and Nichols. So we put together, um, a figure based on kind of what our monthly bills are for our existing footprint and then estimating, uh, what it might cost to have electricity in the new, um, leased area, and we estimated that as eighty dollars a month. And then this is the figure we came up with, we came up with the five thousand eight hundred and thirty-two dollars. Which is about a twenty-eight hundred dollar increase, or is a twenty-eight hundred and thirty-dollar increase. Um, and a large of that, again, inflation, we went from paying about a hundred and fifty dollars a month to about three hundred and thirty dollars a month.
Yeah.
In August, uh, just for the existing fo- footprint that we had. Um, s- the postage line, um, go up to about three hundred dollars, again, we're right at two hundred and fifty dollars for the year already. Uh, if we have any ge- just existing postage, um, so we're looking to increase that by about fifty dollars.
Yeah.
And the postage wrote up again?
And they did, yeah, so if you're doing stuff like we do certified mail and et cetera, um, those, the, those are increased and just your your, um, general postage, um, is about sixty, sixty-two cents now, whatever per stamp, but uh, e- even your general postage has gone up. And fuel's the big one. Last year we budgeted nine thousand dollars, um, we're at ten thousand two seventy-five at the moment. We took the fuel and we based it off of forty-six hundred gallons, based upon the New Hampshire Department of Energy's at, cost that they pu- put on their website at three dollars and eighty-two cents per gallon, times forty-six hundred gallons for the year, comes up to seventeen thousand five hundred and fifty-two dollars.
Question, um, that's based on just, um, going to a local, um, gas station for fuel, which I imagine is what we do now?
Yeah, that's three eighty-two based upon the number from the, the state would be, yeah, retail price.
Oh, just a retail price, okay, um, do we know what it would be?
Yeah.
Um, I know that they have some, um, state places where you can get either diesel fuel or, uh, petrol.
Yeah.
And I'm just wondering what the price difference is between retail versus those, would you know that?
Right. Yeah, uh, so we, sorry, I know.
No, go ahead.
Yeah, so we, Joe and I actually talked about this today and, you know, kind of a light bulb came on, if you will, and we definitely don't pay retail already. So we use um the WEX uh card or corporation for our billing, and since we're a municipality. Uh they're reducing out some of the taxes, so our our, we both agreed today, like, hey, let's present this number, but we should maybe do some research. And figure out what's more of a realistic price that we're paying after uh being relieved of some of the mandated taxes on the public.
Right, that and that relief would be anywhere from twenty to forty cents per gallon, depending on.
Yeah, so.
You know, when they reinstitute, um, that end of the state decided to. Uh, one of them decided to, either the state or the federal government, decided to back off on how much.
Right.
The what, the email that I got from, and the letter that I got from the state, even for the diesel fuel.
Hmm.
They're not fixing a price this year, they're fluctuating with the market.
With the market, but they are still taking off the tax.
Oh, yeah, or they're taking off something, but yeah, but we have no way of predicting what it's gonna be.
Correct, um, but also that um fluctuating price will. Take into account the discount that the state gets. Um, versus what the retail price would be. So it wouldn't be at the retail price.
Correct.
Uh, all the same, I think it'd be fair just to utilize that retail, right, and not try to tighten that too much, because we know it's gonna be volatile.
Yeah, I I can see you doing that. Every time I'm asking, so I've got an idea about um. Um, trying to see what it would take to get the state to put a petrol tank over at um on thirty-one, where they've got their um.
The highway barn, yeah, the state DOT barn, yeah.
Yeah, just add a petrol tank over there.
Right, right.
That could be used by our department.
Yeah.
Um, certainly Greenville Temple and possibly even Mason.
Yep, no, I think it's, I but I I will tell you this, I will look into it. And try to see, you know, I'm I'm definitely about, hey, can we squeeze a little bit of savings out of that? I do think that we obviously have to be careful, because. I I know I can't predict what's gonna happen with the fuel prices. Right now, I think at the pump, uh reasonably, I I'm seeing three fifty. That's about what I'm seeing at the pump. The the state says the three eighty-two, you minus some of the the um. Taxes that are are forgiven for municipalities, we might be closer to the three-dollar range. Right, so we can do a little research on that. Um, I'll get together with the town, pull up some of the WEX um. Reports and kind of see on average what we're getting our retail price reduced. Uh we we're on average twenty, twenty-five cents, thirty cents, I don't know that answer off the top of my head, but I can figure it out. And I think it's worth uh.
I'm not looking at what your numbers are.
Right.
No, I'm not questioning those, because as Sean said, that, you know, using three eighty-two price for budgeting purposes is probably a good idea.
Right.
I'm just looking to see that, um, yeah, that's a front-end price, I'm looking to see that at a tail-end price. What else can we do to reduce it?
Right.
And if we can, um, you know, piggyback off of what the state really uses for its own DOT uh department. Then you weren't that much further ahead.
Right. Yeah, I mean, I I would be nice if they brought something local to the area where we could utilize those state bid prices.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and so, yeah, let us know, I would definitely be happy to hear about that.
Who is the nearest one, not Jeffrey?
Probably Jeffrey, there's one in Milford and Buxton Road.
Yeah.
Um.
There's one in Milford, is there one, uh, how about the one in Wilton, is there?
There's not one in Wilton. Uh, just uh the closest ones from Wilton would be Buxton Road and 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 Milford. And uh Wilton doesn't use it because, you know, it's just the drive time to get there. You you almost, you you burn up gas in the savings at the time, so.
By using the recommended uh energy, you can have your energy site data, that may also mitigate some of the risks of. Uh inflation that we're really not.
Right.
Looking out, you know, three months, six months, nine months out, so.
There might have information we don't know.
I don't know how. I don't know how much we wanna fight that one, because we're gonna lose that in the other.
Oh, I'm not looking, like I said, I'm not looking to change these numbers.
Yeah.
I'm just looking something at the back end to see if we.
Is either fuel is one of those lines I like to knowingly over-budget for, you know, like.
Right.
Going forward, yeah, and just know that. Exactly, yeah, because I don't wanna be caught.
Yeah.
And Chief, you said that you were budgeting forty-six hundred gallons?
That's based on forty-six hundred gallons, so, and that's conservative in itself. Joe and I went back today, uh, at the PD, I keep, in past administrations, we have kept some historical data on what we've been using from year to year. And the last time that we were really fully staffed was twenty nineteen, and we used.
Forty-nine hundred.
It was about forty-nine hundred gallons. So we came up with what we thought might be um a reasonable uh average of forty-six hundred gallons. Uh, this year, we're. Uh, we're looking at about thirty-nine hundred gallons of uses this year, but that's because we've had a lot of new guys. So we always have an officer who's training them, riding in the same car, so we're only running one cruiser. Once those officers are all solo, they're always gonna be solo, right, so we've had almost all year where there's another o- officers appeared up. Because of training purposes. Uh, and we still have that scenario with Officer Peroni until he gets his certification wrapped up with the state. Um, and that's anticipated for possibly January, and then now every officer's gonna be solo. So there's no more pairing up, if you will. Um, one one of the things Joe and I talked about is, you know, I already do this with my officers, but if there's the, if there's times where they can take advantage of pairing up. And running as a solo unit, um, I think it's good for camaraderie, safety, and many other reasons, but it may be a fuel saving measure as well. And actually promote it, right, and it also, I think, just builds camaraderie in the in the agency and uh officers learn from each other's techniques and and.
Hmm.
Patrol tactics and stuff like that, so that's something we can look at.
So with that being said, it almost sounds like that should be rounded up to five thousand and then even maybe four dollars a gallon. Um. Because we're tightening tightening up quite a bit in in other areas.
Yeah.
Um, and it's not gonna give us that uh latitude that we've had in the past, where there's been an excess of money, because we're fully staffed now.
Um. Yeah, it's gonna be tight.
Yeah, and I appreciate the the tightening up too, because with it being fully staffed, we're also seeing expenses that we haven't seen.
Right.
In a number of years now.
Yeah.
Um, you know, one being the insurance and, you know, then it's gonna be the fuel and, so I just wanna be careful not to go. Too crazy, um, and taking out too much and too many lines and not leaving us any type of uh movement.
Right.
To be made.
And historically, if looking at past budgets, you know, the twenty-seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, up through current time, it's really been averaged off of five thousand.
Yeah.
And last year was a was an exception. We kind of threw the five thousand out, because like, hey, we only have one one employee right now, now we have two employees, now we have three employees, so like. We're never gonna burn five thousand gallons, we're not gonna budget that.
Yeah.
So we kind of threw that out the window for twenty twenty-two, because it just, it wasn't gonna happen.
Yeah, so it sounds like for twenty twenty-three, we should, you know, instead of playing with it at forty-six hundred, you know, just put it right to that five thousand mark, do you agree, Lou?
Yeah, I'll go with that.
Yeah, yeah.
So we'll update that as we go along.
And then we also have to look at, you know, the TPW uses a certain amount of gasoline also, besides the diesel for the for their trucks.
Yep, yeah, yeah, we'll talk about that one with them.
Yeah, and and then you can see here on the police equipment, there was an extremely large jump here, um, you know, it went from two thousand dollars budgeted to eleven thousand, four sixty. Um, maybe Joe can speak a little bit to this as well, but, you know, we ended ended up like really diving into, you know, what does, what is police equipment? What do we use day to day, and what are the things that could get broken or need to be replaced? Um, and this also includes a a trying to trying to get a new ballistic shield uh in into the to the rotation. Uh, the the agency currently owns three ballistic shields. Um. That uh really have reached the manufacturer's suggested expiration date. So uh they have a ten-year shelf life, and all of them are past the ten-year life shelf 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 life. And to replace them, you're looking at like it's five thousand dollars a sh- a shield, so we're not looking to necessarily, our minimum was like, hey, could we get a shield replaced this year? Not all three, could we possibly get a shield replaced this year? Um, and then maybe looking at, you know, in twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, getting our equipment um up to date.
Can I add to that, that um, you know, as I asked Meredith before about thinking about creating a um.
Capital reserve.
Capital reserve for um personal personnel equipment.
Yeah, and I think that's kind of, that that's probably a a a wise step, you know, a step in the right direction. Um, the only problem with using a capital reserve, if for some reason that capital reserve is shot down, and then, you know, obviously that expenditure is not gonna be funded. Um, I don't know historically uh how the vote goes, but.
Well, from what I've heard uh from the community, is that there's a feeling that we don't prepare for the future, that we always. Ju- just think about today.
Sure.
Um, so there is a taste um from the people that I've spoken with, to have like those capital reserve accounts, because it's. In essence, savings accounts for known um expenditures that we're in need that are gonna be significant in cost. And that will be a good tool, especially with how we're reworking the budget. Um. And going to the zero-based budget, we're gonna still need to have flexibility and be able to, you know, get those bigger items, and in order to not. Have one year, have the budget go way up, you know, versus the past year, we're gonna need those capital reserve accounts.
Yeah.
Um, so we'll be looking at utilizing the capital reserve program, um, a little bit different uh going forward as a part of this whole thing.
Yeah, I think it's very wise, right? Yeah, we were fortunate, you know, with that we, I think as a town, we we basically on the ARPA funds. We all saw the value in the ARPA funds, you know, we, as an agency, um, you know, we we were able to acquire. Four brand-new portable radios, which we wear in our person, and then, you know, three brand-new mobile, which are the radios mounted in the cruisers. For somewhere around the tune of, you know, thirty-five thousand dollars, which would have had have been budgeted somewhere, and and quite frankly, all that equipment was old.
Yeah.
Right, we were at a point where something's gonna have to be done, so like you were saying, Mr. Talby, we we were, all of a sudden, we were gonna see. Oh, hey, the equipment line needs to be fifty grand this year, because we gotta get this equipment.
And every department was the same, right, and you go down to EMD, if we had a a disaster within that time.
Yeah.
We would've been in trouble.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it was a wise use of the funds and, you know, it sounds like the the town really made some wise choices, we, uh, I'm seeing a lot of upgrades in in our communication capabilities. Which is really where it all comes down to, right? When you have an emergency, it's all about communication.
Oh, we start hearing about things being helped together with duct tape.
Yeah.
Yeah, and our and our tower project on Ridge Road is estimated to be completed by the end of the week, so.
Excellent.
Yeah, that's a good thing.
On the equipment uh topic, I'm showing two equipment lines.
Yeah, I noticed that too.
Yeah, so the funding for twenty twenty-one. Request in twenty twenty-two is the same, but then it varies um with what's come out, like what the actual expenditures are. So I don't know. If you guys can look into that, if it's an anomaly, or like one shouldn't be there.
Four thirty-one and seven forty.
Yeah, all the way in uh column E, yeah.
And consolidate to one line, maybe, I don't know.
So four thirty. That's police equipment maintenance.
Oh, so that's equipment, four thirty-one is maintenance.
And then eh police equipment is seven forty.
Okay. So I just need to change that. Four thirty-one.
Yeah, so that's like, for instance, if this portable was to be dropped or broken or stopped working for any reason. You know, we send them out to the manufacturer, they'll go through them.
Yep.
And um make uh repairs, we've done this a bunch in the past, usually about eight hundred dollars a whack. That's the average cost to get a radio repaired. Uh nowadays, they, from what I've been told, is they actually take the shell, they take the insides, they throw them away. And they stuff a new radio in it, but um. So that, yeah, anyway, so just that is eight hundred dollars for one, and our, they call we have new ones, because the old ones were getting to the point where we were doing that once or twice a year.
Okay.
So we can definitely um.
Just change the name.
Change the name to that, yeah.
Yeah, and then as far, like as far as the, for the uh FAC part of it, some of the departments, they just look back at fire. And they do have uh the two equipment lines. Um, one was for new or replacement, and then the other one, it was repair and maintenance, yeah. So if we could just sort of.
That's, yeah.
Pick similar.
Yeah.
Yeah, ways to denote it.
Need to qualify it in the uh text title or whatever.
Yeah, 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 and just sort of.
Have it out.
Yeah, make it same.
Make a match.
Yeah.
Uh, one of the concerns that I had, and this is not related directly to the police department, but across the town, and that is the electricity. Uh, Joe, was the electricity requirement split across two priorities, priority one and priority two?
Just priority one. Oh, I'm sorry, initially it was, because uh we didn't have the lease on the additional.
Cause I was gonna say, I think you're under budgeted it.
Yeah.
Currently, because you're already. Well beyond four thousand and you only had three thousand on line one, so I said, ooh.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think we anticipated a hundred and twelve percent increase. Um, when we were sitting twenty twenty-one, the same, yeah, you know, like, there we go, uh, so.
But electricity across the town is concerning, because. What I found that the delivery charges didn't change, but the supply doubled like in June timeframe.
Hmm.
I mean, literally doubled, that's what. And you won't see the effect of that until you get a full year of twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, it was officially August first, it was they they announced the the hundred and twelve percent increase was the official number by ever source.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was talking to all the.
Even on your home electric.
Yeah, it's not, I guess it's not unique to just New Hampshire, that's for sure, but.
I th- I think those lines are also tagged to inflation anyway, so.
Yeah.
Um, so Mike, we didn't talk about the uh computer equipment or the computer services, uh, so I just threw this up here. Um. So. Uh, computer equipment, the plan is to replace three uh office computers. And uh one more office chair. And I'll I'll jump into the next one, and that's where the big money is. Uh, this is the detail of the. Police department uh computer software services type stuff. Uh, so if you look at all of these, uh, you know, it's they're they're all required, it's quite a bit of uh in of of costs there. And I'm just gonna flash it up, because I don't think you really care about the details, but if I go back to that, the summary sheet again. Uh, that line actually went up by five grand. It was originally budgeted for forty-five hundred dollars. That covers the the computer equipment, but actually doesn't cover that now, I think it's sixteen hundred per unit, but uh, but that went up quite a bit. But the uh. Uh, the crime software, s- spots and so forth is what would push that up quite a bit.
So that's a new purchase, new software?
It's all licenses, it's all existing licenses, we have them in place today.
We didn't pay for it last year, or this year?
It it was paid for last year, we're not sure where it came out of, but.
Yeah, because I noticed your execution is way under.
Yep.
Yeah, that's.
So it came out of some budget.
Yeah.
Just not sure where it came out of.
Yeah. Yeah, the execution as of the thirty-first of August, uh, October. Was eighteen forty-nine. One thousand eight hundred and forty-nine dollars. It was on somewhere, uh, we we've had some issues with the accounting. I guess in the past, so that may be an accounting glitch, I don't know.
Yeah, because it looks like the, that um, in twenty-one, the. Execution number is nineteen sixty-five, but still it was carried forward to be forty-five hundred in the budget. Which is odd, so the backup must have been there to keep it at that forty-five hundred level.
We were going through other accounts this morning, and Mike said, oh, here's that server that we just bought, so, but it didn't hit the right, the right account number, so.
Oh.
It's one half of the other and the other, but, yeah, we ended up putting at the s- the server, unfortunately, was six, they was six thousand dollars.
Right.
For the server, um, I don't think anybody anticipated that, I think our last server was more like four grand. Um, and I think we we did is we pulled it out of the police equipment line. Part of a piece of equipment, you know, to run the the police department, where may have, could have come out of this computer services, but I think either way, it's. It's okay, um, so the forty-five hundred that was budgeted in twenty twenty-two for computer. it's okay. Uh, so the forty-five hundred that was budgeted in twenty twenty-two for computer services um was justified through uh all basically all the licensing that we have and um to date, um, we're we're about let's say, let's say more accurately through where it says.
So that's supposed to be just for uh computer licenses, that line?
I would say more more so for um licensing and in the in the past, um. Yeah, so we're 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 at forty-one hundred dollars for the year, you know, we budgeted forty-five hundred, um. So I'd have to look, Sean, I'm sorry, um, I don't have the answer to that.
Well, cause if we can, you know, clarify some lines, like just in the
Yep.
So we can put that police computer revenue account.
What are listed as.
Like computer support.
Computer software and.
One software support, yeah, one software support and the other one.
Okay.
Maybe new purchases.
Yeah, I I do think that at some point there might have been some, you know, workstations, PCs bought out of that line item, um.
That should actually go as a um capital equipment for what the um.
I actually have, let me see, I might be able to pull some historical data or if you're really interested in it.
Yeah, we don't have that as a part of now, but yeah.
Well, I consider capital equipment, I think fifteen hundred dollars.
I guess five thousand was, you know, like the number that had been put out there before, like that was kind of like the threshold number. Like to consider it a capital um expense. But, you know, we can we can determine that.
So you don't consider, at that point, you don't consider office computers as capital equipment?
Not if we're replacing them on like a a regular rotation cycle, but if we add five that we'd have to do in one year, then you're looking at, you know, seventy-five hundred
Right.
total, yeah. So that's another discussion, you know, that we're gonna have, like how that stuff should be structured, but.
Yeah, cause you get at a certain point, like, you know, when you were at Windows seven, let's say, and then all of a sudden you went to Windows ten, ten, and a lot of cases that required a new computer.
So with with all that, we're fifty-five thousand dollars above the twenty twenty-two budget and that's a six point seven five percent increase year over year.
Without COLA, without inflation?
No, no COLA. So uh, I don't wanna say no inflation, the the is today's prices, everything is based on today's prices, so we're not count, not considering the price may go up three months from now or six months from now.
Yeah.
But but we're not using the twenty twenty-two prices, you know, we're not using the prices from last year.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's good.
But at the beginning of la- this year, you started out with how many people, Mike? I mean, patrolmen, officers.
We had uh everybody at the beginning of the year, we had four.
And now you're up to six.
Six, yeah.
So a lot of that increase that you're seeing is personnel-related, either salaries, benefits, s- uh, equipment, et cetera.
Yeah, which is, you know, just to see it at that six percent point is, you know, pretty good.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and then knowing it's gonna go up a little bit more once we decide the COLA. Um. And then, once you guys get to the number twos, which sound like they're strongly suggested, um, go from there.
Let me uh just hide a few columns. So the orange uh highlight here is just the key ones that that made a big difference. And we could, you know, Mike could talk through those just just briefly, uh. A- and if if uh, you know, this is actually set up so that we could just tell it yes, uh, and the price goes away. So you can still see the impact if we if we choose which which ones to keep.
Okay. So what's the bottom number for the ones and twos?
So if we add the twos, uh, we add another fifteen thousand dollars and it uh goes up to eight point six three percent. Um, and the the twos are, it's an additional ballistic shield, another five thousand dollars. Uh, one additional office computer, um, you know, really sixteen hundred dollars, that could probably be be pushed off. You know, um, additional training, this this is what uh what, you know, Mike strongly suggested was was so they can do some scenario-based training. So highly recommends that. And then there was the additional incentives for education and fitness.
Yeah. Yeah, I know that incentive uh program is critical, you know. I think of, you know, the retention, um, instability of that department, you know, we could hinge on that, ten thousand dollars or what it may be, um. Now, when you said an additional ballistic shield, so that'd be a second for this year?
Yeah.
Yeah. And in the real, like within that ballistic shield conversation, um. Is there a possibility to to put off starting that replacement program till next year altogether or? And this and it's just in that consideration of waiting the additional um incentive program items. Um, so I don't want you guys to be unsafe.
Right.
You know, um, so I don't know what you mean by shelf life, if they degrade to that point where you can't actually use them, like is it so it requires you to take them out of service or?
You know, the the manufacturer's not gonna require us to take them out, it's just their suggested shelf life and the timeframe they're willing to stand behind their product. And uh I think reality would say that it's it's more than likely gonna be fine. But do we wanna risk it if it's taking rifle rounds and it's the somehow the material's degraded? Uh, those shields stay in the trunks of those cars three sixty-five. So they're ready to deploy in our frontline patrol cars for the last eleven years. Bouncing around, cold, hot, cold, hot. So are they still the same caliber they were four years ago as far as protection level? I'm not sure. And so that's why the manufacturer puts out this, hey, the shelf life for really for this is 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 ten years. After that, we don't stay behind the product. So we just take on, I think the town takes on a little bit of liability if we deploy that shield and it doesn't perform, knowing that it's outside the manufacturer's specs.
Do you have a planned obsolescence guide or something like that where you could basically program for the out years all your ballistic shield requirements?
So like the sh- just the replacement or? No, at this point, we've never had a plan in place to replace them and this is the first year I've had a chance to address that, being the chief, um.
See, this way you can kind of anticipate what your requirements are each forthcoming budget.
Right. And I think that's where this, yeah, the spreadsheet is one of those things that helps, it's gonna help us now look down the road because before, like the shield probably would have been al- always in the back of everybody's mind. Right? Let's get through the budget. If for some reason there's money left over to buy a shield at the end of twenty twenty-three, we'll do it. If not, we won't. And that's kind of how we've played it. And aside, I think that's how we're, that's why we're here. And I think this spreadsheet and this zero-based budget is uh start to bring some of those things to light, which it has.
Yeah.
Um, and then, you know, I I do believe um the capital reserve may be a way to look at these more expensive items and and fund them, like you were saying, so, um, again, that's gonna be up to the town. I think we should really look at trying to get one replaced in twenty twenty-three. I think it's wise. And then moving down the road um throughout the years.
Well, I've heard too, um, that some of the EMD expenditures are gonna be lower than projected.
Okay.
Um, and if you're saying, like, if we replace one, but that car's not at a scene and then that other one goes out and we knowingly are deploying that
Right.
old shield, right? It doesn't make much sense to me to just replace one.
Right.
You know, it seems like if they're all of the same age and it's that same concern, it'd be an all or nothing.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um.
Yeah, for me, I I you know, I I have to outweigh the risk, right? Like, so I'd rather have an older shield than no shield, if you know what I'm saying? So I I gotta be, you know, you gotta be careful what you wish for sometimes, but I also want to, I I know there's value in that shield regardless of its age, even despite our just the conversation we just had. Uh, so I I I'm, I agree with you. I don't wanna lose them, I think they're a valuable tool and we do need a plan to replace them, you know what I mean, like.
Did you say that you have two of them? I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just, I think I was asking the same question, how many do you have slash need for altogether?
No, we we have three and we currently deploy two at all times, meaning two that are in the cruisers all the time and a backup.
Okay, and are, so many do you have that are over ten years old?
All of them.
All of them.
Yeah.
Okay.
So realistically, two is a solid number. Because those are our frontline cruisers, which are are the most highest probability of being on scene.
Can can we find some way, whether it be from EMD or some other source, to uh seed um, a capital uh or reserve, yeah, capital reserve, um, capital government reserve fund for that?
Well, that'd have to, um.
It's just a, just a thought.
Yeah, 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 well, yeah, I don't know about through the EMD. I brought up the EMD um portion just because that is gonna loosen up more ARPA funds.
Mm-hmm.
So my thoughts are now, um, should we just go ahead and purchase those through the ARPA money?
I didn't wanna break that up, but that's exactly what I was thinking.
Yeah, yeah, like, and just, yeah, and shift that cost off, cause right now, what we're trying to do is to help
Thank you.
keep these budgets in line and set ourselves up.
Mm.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so that ten-year timeline is exactly where my mind's at for everything that we're doing right now, like across the town is trying to look forward ten years and give us a ten-year timeline in general. So that we can start these uh planning programs and give us time to establish uh additional capital improvement um, accounts and all the different um things that we're gonna need to do in order to uh create a stable um environment.
Yeah, cause I mean, if you seed enough money to buy two of them.
Yep.
And where that will start.
For the standard, please.
Then as the seed.
Yeah, I mean, that was the largest kind of.
Yeah.
Uh, builds up, you know, you've got the money in there, uh, after that.
Yeah.
The prices vary greatly.
Yeah.
Um, but.
So.
And then again, waiting, the price is just gonna go up too.
That's true.
Yeah, so in that five thousand dollar, you know, that's a price that we got something off of a year ago.
Cause that, like, for that equipment to have a ten-year, you know, shelf life is exceptionally, that's awesome to know, cause that's a long time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, and then that gets us those incentive programs, you know, like this year, um, and
Right.
once we back to COLA and, you know, like it may all kind of uh wash out. So you're not quite sure of the exact pricing on the shields?
Yeah, so that was the uh uh an average price probably, you know, the beginning of twenty twenty-two.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I'd have to do some more research um on that, um, but, um, I think it's a solid starting point. Sure. Uh, and I can do some research in in a hurry, I don't know, to be.
Yeah, cause I think it'd be good, you know, I I wouldn't mind, you know, taking it out of ARPA and pulling it off the budget altogether.
True. I'll work on some really, you know, some, just make sure the, I'll work on some numbers this week and next week.
Okay.
Get back to you.
I was gonna say.
Is that for two now or is that for three?
Well, we'll see what it comes in at, cause if they're eighty-five hundred bucks, then it'd probably be the two. So I give, you know, it's made a drastic shift, but I feel like if they're still around that five thousand each.
If we have a reserve fund for the other one, then
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we'll be in real good shape if we get through, if we get two.
Okay.
And then you're adding uh incentive.
Yeah, keep the like that full, yeah, yeah.
Keep the ten-four.
Yep. Okay, and then uh the additional training for seven thousand dollars, you okay with that? And the incremental thousand?
Yeah, that's all it was, was.
It was another thousand dollars?
Yeah, it was a thousand dollars.
Oh, the last year, yeah, twenty twenty-two budget.
Yeah, yeah, uh, right?
Um.
Yeah.
I can't say that. Yeah, so education was six thousand, we're at six thousand seventy-five, a thousand dollars gets us to seven thousand, right?
Yeah.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah.
And then the what was the um incentive line?
Uh, it was a, it was an incremental s- eight thousand.
The number. The account.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, it's a new one, there's no account number to it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we'd have to sign the line.
Okay.
We still need to discuss the incentives, right?
Well, no, we are right now. So there's like, there's another tier of incentive two, which includes the shift de- differential.
How how? Mm-hmm.
Um, and that's, that was uh ranked a three.
Yep.
So that's something that we can approach by next year.
Okay.
Um.
Fair enough.
So one and two each, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, so all of those, the education, the fitness, the longevity, those will all uh be proposed to the community um, for approval.
Perfect.
Nice.
So this seven computers now, the plan was to replace three, possibly four this year, it's like, it was like sixteen hundred per, do you want you to push that sixteen hundred dollars out till next year?
If it's okay.
Right. I also think that, giving it a little bit more thought, I think if we I I think we can, based upon some of the updates we've made in recent years, we might be able to get away with two computers this year.
Oh, two computers, okay.
Yeah, I think we could do two.
Yeah.
Excellent.
It's thirty-two hundred.
Yeah. Yeah.
As we.
Provide a little safety and all of a sudden the money starts coming off.
Yeah, yeah, no, and I think what happened, yeah, yeah, what happened is we had, um.
They run it, run it safety and incentives.
There was a year, a couple, I think it was in twenty twenty, I think it was, where there was a surplus and I think there was a communication between two carpenter and the board and where they, there was a surplus and I said, well, where could you use this? Well, why don't we just buy those new computers now and wait till the next year?
Yeah.
The money's there. And I think that's what happened and it got us kind of like in a good spot in the rotation.
Okay.
Right, and then, you know, obviously we keep up with our updates and I think we're running all Windows eleven. Um, so we we, uh, thanks to the community, we do have very, we do have very good equipment, you know, and and it shows, so.
Now, I had heard, I think you had mentioned that you were hand-carrying your backup, at least one of your backups, um, home with you.
Yeah, so that's been remedied, yeah.
That's been remedied?
Yeah, I mean, we are now at a cloud-based storage.
Good, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, you got the cloud already?
Yeah.
The backups? Cause I got a quote from him today for us and you.
Oh, I was, I thought we were on cloud-based storage, cause we don't do the, I don't, we don't have to carry anything in and out anymore.
Yeah.
I haven't since April, May.
I'm sure he did it, right?
I, yeah, he did it, I didn't. As I know, it was dumb.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was like, oh, okay, thank you. But we know about it, I I, so we ha- do not have to carry around an external hard drive anymore, switch them out every other day and, um.
So you've got some onsite back, one onsite backup?
We have some onsite physical backup and then we have some, my understanding, some cloud storage.
Okay.
Yeah, cause we're not carrying anything offsite anymore, right?
Okay. We are.
Well, and then some of those questions and comments, if we could keep those, you know, like, if you have concerns like that, you know, just address that outside of a public meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, um, security things.
Well, yeah. Mm-hmm.
Yeah, exactly.
Good call.
Yeah, we seem to be in a good spot, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're increasing.
We're getting there.
Let's get there.
All right.
This is, this is pretty small, but there's just a hundred and fifty-dollar community service, was one of the desirables, just money to.
Yeah.
Coffee with a cop thing, is that what that was?
There was coffee with a cop, Halloween for trick-or-treat candy or anything else that just might come up, that we wanna do some community-based stuff that might take a few dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good with that, okay. So right now, we're at eight hundred eighty-six thousand dollars, which is a seven point two nine percent increase over. So right now, we're at eight hundred eighty six thousand dollars, which is a seven point two nine percent increase over twenty twenty two.
Alright, yeah, so that was with taking both the shields out?
Yep, shields are gone now.
Incentives are out.
Incentives are in.
Yeah. I'll have to get that updated one from you, Joe, before we walk out of here, we'll put it on that USB drive, thank you.
Yep. Yep.
So it's seven point seven two percent, you said?
Seven point two nine percent increase.
Trying to make sure I'm like. Alright, yeah, so the uniform, cause there was a big jump in uniforms, like for the third tier two.
That was, I I marked that as no, that uniforms are admins, it was an additional uh setup for uh.
That's related to additional personnel coming on board.
That wasn't the additional personnel, no, that was uh uniforms for admins, it was just went through that list and said
No.
if you wanna get uniforms for admins, that that was the additional cost, it was like thirteen hundred dollars, and I just said, well, recruit s- scrutinizing everything, I'll just take that one right out, but.
Right.
Yeah, cause the number, like the tier one uniform was almost ten grand, and then the
Yeah.
And and so.
The tier one, two and three went up to like fifteen.
Yep, so uh Mike went through the tier one stuff and
Yeah.
uh everything has has a life cycle, and he went through and he just said, well, how long can we really make this last, and went through everyone line item and pushed out that life cycle to what's reasonable. Um you know, extended that as as necessary, and then he went through and said, what uniforms, what state are the current uniforms in today for each each officer? And that pushed out some replacements out to following years, so he knocked that way down to like forty three hundred, for nine thousand.
Oh, so it's, so that's been adjusted even for tonight, okay, alright.
Yes, yep. Uh uniforms, four thousand three hundred, just ninety seven dollars. So it's a thirteen hundred dollar increase over last year, but it's way down from the nine thousand.
Okay. Alright. And then, just so I can see, like that third tier of incentive, the shift dif- differential's a no for right now?
Yeah, I said that was a no.
Okay. Alright.
Cool.
Think so, yeah, seems pretty good, do you feel pretty good with that, Mike?
I do, thank you, yeah, and um I appreciate everybody's effort, um I think the only thing we just wanted to bring to light was the um Jo- Joe and I did work on some, well, what numbers would look like if we added officers, so I think it's worth a conversation, at least look at it, um. Do you have that, Joe, up there?
Yeah, it's right here now, um.
Start a capital reserve account for adding officers.
Yeah, right, right.
Yeah.
So with that being said, I I I didn't wanna come in and say, oh, we need officers and not have anything to say about it, justification or reasoning behind it, I I did bring a letter with me that I typed um essentially to the board, and I would like to submit it as the minutes, so it's just, I think it's a good read. Um I typed it up about a week and a half ago, uh it just talks about our current situation and some justification if there was to be a thought process uh or a consideration by the board at some point. So that one's uh signed and uh entered in for the board. Um so currently we have, including myself, there's six full-time police officers, sworn police officers. And we have one full-time admin, which is Kelly, so um what we call a civilian employee. Um currently, we're not uh supplying twenty-four hour police coverage to the town in the whip switch, um which presents some issues. So in in that letter, I talk about, you know, what our our goal might be as a town moving forward. Um in trying to provide twenty-four hour coverage um to the community, um. I think it's based upon um some of the information they have, like the US census says, the twenty twenty census said we had like fifty three hundred residents. Um I think it's hard to tell exactly how many residents we have, I I don't really know the exact number, I don't think anybody really knows.
It was higher than that.
Yeah, I believe it's higher.
Mm, that's fifty four.
It uh, that was before the latest census, I thought it was close up to fifty.
Um.
Mm-hmm. It was fifty two before the last.
Fifties.
Yeah. And so that doesn't take into account for the fluctuation of visitors to town, the people working in town and uh the attendance of our schools, uh I I did some research with the schools, we currently have um right around eleven hundred students in the schools in town uh during the day. Uh and those are mixed, as people may or may not know, Greenville, the town of Greenville utilizes um our school system. Uh so some of those uh students uh are uh from Greenville and then obviously the faculty and staff is from everywhere. Um and from Massachusetts, New Hampshire, or wherever they may come. Um also, the town, um even in just in a visual perception, has been growing, whether you look at traffic or houses being built in town. Um a a basic number from the town office here is, well, in the last three years, estimated a hundred and twenty to a hundred and thirty new homes have been built in town. That doesn't include any accessory dwellings, so I didn't add that in, so accessory dwellings would be, just as they say, might be uh, you know, an apartment above a barn, uh basement apartment or something like that, um where uh again, people may live that maybe didn't live in the past. So I think it's safe to assume that, you know, we have some increase in population in town, um and I think that trend will continue. Uh with increased population, I think we look at an increased demand on public safety services, even demand on the town office. There is a um based on the Bureau of uh Statistics, which is a federal agency. The average, um national average of officer to inhabitants is uh two point three, so two point three officers per every one thousand inhabitants. Uh newest, which currently is at one point two officers per every one thousand inhabitants. Um and so that's well below the national average. And I think the the recommendation is, the the na- national recommendation is two to two to one, so two officers per a thousand. I'm not saying we need to be there, but if you were to take out our numbers and go off the two to one, we'd be at ten officers.
Is that reasonably based, or is that the national average?
These are all national average, yeah, yeah.
National average, but actually, that doesn't include administrative staff.
No, that's just police.
That's just police, so, uh so you as chief are more of an administrative position than you are an actual, and
That's one officer, yeah. Correct, yeah.
the same thing would be is if you had um I don't know if that would include a detective or a um um if you had an in-house prosecutor.
Right, and yeah, so there is some literature on that, where they do break that out, so you can find literature will break out, well, just as you said, like your command staff would not equate into that um that ratio, right?
Until, because they're not active patrol.
And then it also breaks down whether or not like a detective, a a resource, a school resource officer, not, cause they're stuck, they're in the schools and uh so when they, when they, these national averages really go off of patrol base. So actually patrol officers out in the field.
Okay.
Um that, so I think my opinion, and you know, I think that the the two to one ratio is is pretty solid, even with command staff in small towns.
Mm-hmm.
I think it's a pretty strong number, um. It, there's an interesting study, if you wanted to read it, Hollis PD did a study just recently, just on this topic. And they took in consideration, and it's public, they took in consideration, command staff, patrol hours, um detectives, it's all in there.
Right.
And it's it's not a very, uh it won't take you hours to read, you know what I mean, and and I I think it's worth uh if you did a search for it online, I think you would find it, it's public, it's public information, even if you go onto their, and then you go onto Town Hallis's website, you'll find it. Uh and you go onto the police page and then you'll you'll find the the study.
Well, there's that book that was put out by the Chiefs of Police organization or something, about how to build a uh a police department.
Right, it's probably, yeah, the International Association Chiefs of Police.
Those are the exact numbers that they've referenced in there.
Yeah. Yeah. So they, the I the IACP kinda at one point, they 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 were kinda quasi endorsing the the ratio. And and then they kinda backed away from that and said like, they're they're more more or less saying if you look at the Hollis study, it's saying this is probably a better representation of the of how ratio should be. Um and and I, after reading that study a couple of weeks ago, um I thought there was a lot of value in it, you know, and it's it's not overly, like I said, it's not a lot of read, but it it is comprehensive, you might have to read it a couple of times to grasp the ratios.
Is that available online?
Yeah, it's all it's all available public, yeah, and like I said, if you go to the uh Hollis um town website, go to the PD page and I think you'll actually just, it's gonna be pretty much highlighted, it's one of the top things that they've accomplished.
Good, thank you.
Um adding a seventh officer would would uh give us uh oh some overnight coverage, at least four nights a week, adding an eighth officer would be twenty-four seven creating, you know, twenty-four seven, three sixty-five. Uh it also has uh the ability to have some overlap in ship, in shifts, meaning that, you know, if we have a shift from three to three PM to one AM and then we have an evening shift, um or a nine PM to seven AM shift, we have that overlap where, you know, the officers are working together, intel is being shared. Um there's more cohesion between the department, those types of things. Trying to run an agency that was six guys, twenty-four seven, three sixty-five is awful lean. Um trying to keep up with the training requirements, vacation holidays, um it's it's uh really a hard thing to do. Uh not really safe for the officers either. Uh so if we, if we were to look at adding officers, you know, it would result in um a timely response calls, to calls for service, especially high priority calls. Um officers being more visible in the community, um and providing hopefully a better quality service to the community. Um currently, right now, we we rely on state police uh for what we might call after hours. Um the hours that we're not um on patrol here in Nipswich, um and the issue we're having with that is Nipswich, uh as a town, holds jurisdiction, uh so by law, um we hold jurisdiction in town. Uh one oh six dash B colon fifteen talks about all municipalities with three thousand or more citizens, whole law enforcement jurisdiction. With that being said, with us relying on state police, the reality is they're not obligated to respond. They do it because it's the right thing to do and they try to help out. With that being said, they're down seventy to eighty troopers right now, that's one third of their workforce. And they're finding it harder and harder to cover their own liabilities and their own patrolees. And my fear is, one day when somebody calls for assistance after hours, there's just not gonna be anybody coming. Um and some people will say, well, what about mutual aid, well, mutual aid has specific laws and regulations that go along with that as well. So when we ask for request assistance from, let's say, Peterborough, Jaffrey, Greenville, Temple, Mason, Ashby, Ashburnham for backup, the mutual aid law requires that the agency holding jurisdiction is also responding. So we're supposed to be coming as well, um so if you ask a municipality to show up, other than state police or the sheriff's department, to show up without Nipswich being en route, they're not gonna come.
Or is that wanna own that?
They, yeah, they own it, they put themselves in jeopardy and they're working outside uh the law.
And I I think it was Jason that mentioned, um I think, about like an on-call?
Yeah, correct, I I mean, he broached the the conversation with me, but uh, you know, we're not really in a position for that, I mean, most of our officers live out of town.
Yeah.
What's the response town?
Yeah.
What's the compensation, do they get a car to drive to home and back and respond to the calls with an emergency status?
Right. Right. Yeah.
So there's a lot that goes, that goes into this.
And that costs more money.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um I I've done it in the past, when I originally was uh worked for Friends of Town, was my first job, and I lived in town.
Right.
At that time, I took call, but to be frank, it was terrible. I'd get out of a ten hour shift and I would be on call till seven AM, after working a ten hour shift, and I and I didn't feel like I could leave.
Right.
So I'd wait at home for the call, you know, with my duty belt and my gun and my uniform all standing by the door. So it really does restrict on all, you know, anybody that's been on call would know that it restricts your day-to-day operations of your own life and, you know, interacting with your family and stuff, it's a lot to ask, um. So my my worry is like, you know, like against, you know, that state police will get the call and, you know, they're gonna be like, well, all our troopers are tied up. There's no, we're not, they're not gonna come, and then why do we do that?
Right.
Right, and especially if we look at, um a lot of times, if especially if it's a violent crime, our other emergency services are being activated as well, right?
Right.
So we're having our EMS or ambulance service, we're having our fire department, which we know backs up our emergency or EMS uh so evenly on a regular basis, especially on um high priority calls. Um so Delta lever calls, or which your medical call is a high level emergency, right? And then you have your echo level calls, which would equate to like cardiac arrest, inefficient breathing, you know. Nipswich fires pretty much getting toned out to those ambulance calls to assist, it's kind of an automatic. So we're asking those people to go in to what might be a violent scene without any police protection.
Right.
Um so that puts them at jeopardy. Um so that's one of, some of my greatest concern, um as the chief of police, you know, it's obviously my recommendation that we start looking to move towards, you know, supplying you know, one up, you know, twenty-four seven police coverage to our community, um and and uh you know, falling in line and complying with the law, what the R S A. Um obviously, it's up to the town, uh the town people, you know, can decide uh whether they want to have full-time coverage. It's my recommendation that we do, and how we get there, this has to be a conversation, uh but it is my recommendation, and I support what the town does, um. Uh I don't, you know, like I said, I I think it's the right to do and it's my recommendation, um and how we get there, we'd have to work on it.
So an eighth, like it would be at that eighth officer point, that you'd be able to execute that safely?
I think we can do it, yeah.
Yeah.
Correct. Yeah.
Yeah, cause that es- essentially doubles the available or the the amount of hours that we need to cover, it was roughly a hundred and seventy hours in the week. Um. Yeah, that give us three hundred and twenty, you know, working hours or so, for those eight officers, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I'd have to do that. Sounds a bit weird.
I could see where even just trying to pull it off with six, yeah.
Mm.
Yeah, it's very difficult, I mean, we've, I've been at agencies where we've tried it and it it uh it wore us out. And the other part of that is, every time an officer went out for a training, sick, vacation, PTO, the next officer gets his schedule completely changed.
Right.
So there's no stability in the schedule, so like I planned my life and all of a sudden like, hey, Joe took the week off next week, you now have his shifts. Well, I have everything planned, sorry, I had to come to work. Um so that was like constant, like e- every time I got a shift rotation, like I'd finally get off an overnight and as soon as I got off, the guy that's going overnight takes the two week vacation, and I immediately got bumped to overnights.
Right.
And a whole new shift, like wait a minute, you know, so I mean, it's it's just not a good way to retain people by messing with their schedule all the time. And I can speak for myself and probably confidently for many people, that we want some uh stability in our sched- schedule so we can plan the rest of our life, I I don't know anybody that says, I don't care what my schedule does, right?
Yeah.
Give me what you want and then change it anytime, it's fine.
Well, you make doc disappointments or whatever.
Yeah, so and that's a hard thing, you know, and and the guys that work the overnight shifts, those are the real hard shifts, right, that's not normal.
Yeah.
Right, it's a hard shift, it may not be hard as far as the workload, but just what it does to your body, um.
Sleeping in the day and being up all night.
Yeah, yeah, and unless you're. Yeah, yeah, and unless you're somebody who who's really um doesn't mind sleeping during the day, I don't know many people like that, but. I worked ten years of overnights and I didn't sleep for ten years.
Pretty much.
Right?
Mm-hmm.
So that was pretty much, uh I did it because I needed to make a living and I enjoyed the job, but it was terrible. Now here I am.
Alright, so that has like that spreadsheet that you have up on the screen.
So if. If you were to hire an officer now, uh in July, uh the increase, the budget would be about sixty-three thousand dollars. If you were to hire the officer January first, it's a hundred and six thousand dollar increase. And then if you were to hire the second officer, uh January first, so two officers January first, it's a two hundred thousand dollar increase.
And that includes insurance, all of that.
Yes, everything.
Retirement, that's a biggie.
Yep.
Yeah.
See, one of the things that, this this was really Joe's idea, which I thought was bright and uh, you know, he said, well, why don't we look at like. A July one start, so the impact for the first year is fifty percent. Um and I was like, yeah, that's maybe a way of of getting this approved somewhat somehow as saying, hey, you know. Then the reality is we're almost in here right now, right? And there's there's no hiring process in place, so that's it, it's just not gonna happen.
Yeah.
So that's one of the things that Joe came up with and I think it was pretty, a pretty good move, but.
That wouldn't be bad because you could hold that for a year, see how it works out. And then continue from there.
But that's only one officer, you need two to get the twenty-four seven.
That's only one officer. That's twenty-four seven.
So who's saying is gonna take two years, you know, to implement it fully.
Uh.
Yeah, you could take it over to, you could implement the full twenty-fourth seven by over two or three years.
So hire one officer by July twenty-three, hire the second one July twenty-four, and then by January twenty-five, you could have the twenty-four seven.
Hmm. January to twenty-four.
Yeah.
It's definitely a step in the right direction and.
July.
It's inevitable that it's gonna, it's it's inevitable that this is gonna be needed. You know, with with what I stated and just growth, I mean, I don't. I don't think the population's gonna shrink in New Hampshire, uh or Southern New Hampshire.
Well, it's just that, um. Two good valley real estate commissioners board or something, um thing last night, they do quarterly events. And uh they're stating that this area is actually seeing significant, you know, volume for home sales still.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
You know, like whereas everything's trending down nationally, we're actually holding if not increasing a little bit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's a desired area to come to.
Because everybody wants a little slice of heaven.
Yeah.
Well, it's also with the last, um, census. Uh the Southwest Regional Planning Commission. Found that New Upwitch was the fastest growing town in the whole S W R P C area.
Yeah, so either we start tackling some of these things now, um or be faced with some really hard decisions.
Yeah.
Uh down the road.
Mm-hmm.
Which we're trying to get out of that, um. Trying to plan for the future, like in the things that we're doing, um right now.
Yeah. I think we've got the time to be able to phase it in. And progress along the way.
Alright. Uh I'm just gonna take that in informationally at this point and then I'm sure um have, you know, conversations starting tomorrow with community members and.
Sure. Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, just kind of gauge.
Yeah. Yeah, I just didn't wanna ignore it. I think it's important that at least we know where we stand as a community. And, you know, let the community to decide how we wanna move. Um and I said I'll make the re- I make the recommendation and and we'll s- we'll see what the community wants.
Yeah, thank you, Mike.
Yeah.
I'll do it.
Yep.
And I didn't, um, the A C O budget, I I think it's flat all around, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
What's A C O budget?
The animal control.
Animal control. Well, did you plan to talk about that today too?
No, no, but it 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 does fall under, um, like, and the police, yeah, yeah.
Okay, good. It does, Mike, yeah, yeah.
But I I think if I remember correctly, I don't think there was any increases. I only sent that letter asking for the, about the stipend to pay for Jen.
And all that was was kind of like retweaking.
It's same number as just giving her a stipend and I would work within the budget, so.
Yeah.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't work outside the budget.
Yeah.
So if for some reason we're giving her the stipend and for some reason we had an extraordinary amount of calls and I used up the budget, well, then it would be on us to take care of it and I wouldn't call Jen anymore. Right? Like that's, that's, that would become our responsibility, full responsibility.
Okay.
So I'd be able to work within, um, I will work within the budget.
Okay.
Did you save that on my desktop there?
I did not, no.
Oh.
Actually, that one is saved on the desktop.
Uh.
So I'm gonna have to get a copy of that one.
Okay, yep.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, that's, I I did, I put it on the desktop, yeah.
Maybe you could email it to me.
Okay. Are you gonna thumb drive it?
Okay.
Yeah, whatever you wanted.
It's all good.
I've got my note anyway, so if we last a while, I'll be fine.
Oh.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, just hit save and I'll come over and throw it on this jump drive and email it to you tomorrow.
We got two hours and minutes to go through, so.
You have another two hours.
No, no, I'm just saying it.
Alright, alright, yeah.
On this subject, yeah.
Yep. Alright, we'll take that thumb drive.
Yeah, don't delete that, that way I have it too.
And if it wants to overwrite the one on there, Joe, just say yes, it's fine. That'll be the most updated one.
Uh. I'm gonna save it to your desktop.
Yes.
Yep. Um. Still gonna go, wait, twenty twenty-three budget?
Yep, you can go right in there, yep.
Okay.
Cool.
You wanna see your gender? Are you good?
No, I don't need anything.
Alright.
And just so everybody gets the same one, I'll just email you that and then we have the Joe.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, that way everybody has the same.
Alright, great.
Yeah, and we get the master updated and.
Yeah.
Excellent.
Alright.
Awesome, okay. I'm gonna sit down for a few more stuff.
Who knew you were gonna be working?
You're a good driver.
But thank you, I wouldn't have been able to do that.
Yeah, no, it's been a great help.
Cool, so you're you're good, Mike?
I'm good, thank you. Thanks for everybody's time, appreciate it.
Alright. Yeah, you got it. You know, thank you for all the work that you're putting in with these gentlemen.
Yeah.
That's awesome.
Yeah. It's gonna be a critical piece going forward and some of the stuff that I've seen, um, from the state is actually encouraging. Um municipalities to step away from the traditional uh budgeting model and uh zero base was one of the suggested.
Yeah. Hmm.
Models to start looking at, so we're ahead of the game.
Okay.
Yeah.
What?
I don't think it's been a while.
What?
You can actually find out what's in a program this way, can't you?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, that's that's what I thought was the best part of that whole thing is it's so eye-opening. Doing the deep dive, you know what I mean? Like, like you said, you didn't realize how much a uniform head to toe actually costs.
Yeah. It's just thousands.
Yep, thousands.
Yeah.
One of the things that I observed about the police department was that everything seems to be driven by personnel costs. If it's not just salary, it's all those related costs, just about everything.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah.
Yeah.
So you add one person that just has a tail that keeps going and going and going.
Yep.
Even fuel consumption.
Yeah, yeah, every.
Right, exactly, everything.
Everything.
Yeah, it's the first eleven line items are all pretty much like, this is what it's gonna cost.
Yeah.
Right?
Right.
Once you establish the salary, that's it, you know, then it trickles down to the insurance, the dental, life insurance, stuff like Medicaid, retirement.
Right.
Those are all pretty much based on the the uh salary.
How many people you have, yeah.
Yeah, and how many people you have.
And just to help uh help us make decisions deliberately and with intention.
Right.
Um.
And prepare for the future.
Yeah.
Don't say.
Oh, no.
Save, say it ain't so.
So uh, so Mike, that version has names in it, so we don't wanna share that, those files outside of the small group.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. So, anything you guys wanted to kind of chat about specifically? We're gonna jump into cola now.
I do. Um January seventh is the budget hearing and we have to have the final budget posted the week before that, so just, we just need to keep that in mind.
Yeah.
And I have to put that all in, all of their stuff into.
I thought we were talking, I thought you said it was the tenth.
Oh, I don't know my phone. That was the seventh.
Uh, I don't know, for some reason I thought we were planning the tenth and the seventeen.
I think I put it in my computer, but I don't know if it updated in my phone.
Six, seven, eight, nine, ten, oh yeah, maybe it's the tenth.
Oh, yeah, yeah, just, yeah. That's what we were talking like last week when we were going through all the dates.
Yeah.
Yeah, so hopefully we can still meet that early date, but.
Yeah.
Uh we do have one week leeway, um where we can push it out, so. Don't wanna do that, though.
No.
So, cola.
Cola.
What are your thoughts?
I prefer the diet version.
Leads to dementia, you're saying.
Let me ask, did everybody understand how that little model worked when you changed the percentage for cola and how it affected?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Thank you for that.
That's, that's a big key.
I'm just gonna move over there.
Well, I saw that you had it down, you know, in um a full percent. And what the difference was changing from, you know, five percent to six percent to seven percent. And. I was thinking more in terms of. Uh we should consider it in quarter of a percent. So that we've got a little bit of flexibility of, you know. It's the same thing, but uh instead of being thirteen thousand, whatever it was per percent. I can book it up here, it comes down to about, uh, what's it, three thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars and thirty-some odd cents there. And in a quarter percent increment.
So what quarter, like what percent, including a quarter increment?
You know, so they say that, you know, it.
No, I understand that, like, so all you do is break down that whole number, yeah.
And break it down, right, so that uh that we don't have to think in terms of a full percent of.
Yeah, we weren't forced to have to do that, but I understand what you're saying, so I guess I'll start the conversation a little bit different. Where Debbie has asked her peers of other town administrators what. They've kind of come to for a cola, and I know that there's a mix of different incentives and uh bonus structures.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
But it all breaks down roughly to, what'd you say, a seven percent?
Between seven and nine, really.
Yeah, um so that's where, um, there's some of the surrounding communities.
Are these towns that give merit increases also?
It doesn't matter. Whatever whatever the bottom line is, if it's all cola, all merit, a combination of cola and merit, it ends up, most of them were at eight percent.
Total.
Total, no matter which way it went, but the increase in salary was a- around eight percent for most of them. And then some of them were thrown on the hundred percent health insurance on top of that, which I never got to calculate what that fifteen percent was.
Yeah, you you had mentioned that previously also.
Yeah. Yeah. So.
So that puts us in that uh decision range of, you know, six to eight percent, just to keep pace with the communities that are around us.
Okay.
And it's really important, um, that we kind of get, there's not a lot of difference between, you know, six, seven, or eight percent. Overall, like for the overall budget, because you're only, you know, going from six percent to eight percent is only going to increase it roughly thirty thousand dollars.
The overall budget tells us more than that.
Is that the?
No, that's right, it was thirteen, it was thirteen percent per. Uh I'm sorry, thirteen thousand plus per percent.
Mm-hmm.
According to, um.
That's what my memory recollects.
Yeah, that's kind of what I figured out from.
About thirteen grand change.
From the information, yeah.
So that works out to. Not even one, like it's not worth all the toil that we're going through, I don't think, um, in considering the difference, um. Between the two. I know it's a large jump when you look at numbers.
Yeah.
Um but the actuality is that it doesn't really impact the total overall budget uh that much.
Right.
What's your new number there? I don't know what percent you put in there.
I put in eight. You had one, two, three, four, five, seven.
Yeah, I went to seven, I kind of fell short, didn't I?
Yeah.
And then I I just did the eight. Where's the final number? Yeah, so I did that.
Well, if you add, just add whatever was the, the what, uh one percent difference and uh. To that seven and I'll give you what eight is.
Well, the difference would be from your zero percent to your eight percent. Right now, your zero percent is is there.
One percent, yeah. Right.
And this is your eight percent number, that equates to this number.
Okay.
So the difference, the delta on that is.
Oh. Oh, that's what delta means. Yeah, so it's going from eight fifty-seven to eight seventy.
So that would be one point nine.
Thirteen. Right, thirteen grand. Thirteen thousand bucks.
Um thirteen thousand, one hundred and sixteen dollars, yeah.
Pretty much, forty-five cents.
Forty-five cents, yeah.
If you wanna get to.
Sorry, I rounded up to fifteen, yeah, but it all kind of comes down to the same point.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which is like point oh 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 one cents per thousand.
Yeah. So it comes out that the budget would be about one point nine million.
No, that's just the salary part, like everything is related to, yeah.
Yeah, just for salary part, yeah.
And and that adjusts Medicare, retirement, it adjusts all the other stuff because it's all affected by salary.
And segments.
Right.
Yeah. Can you imagine doing that longhand?
No, thanks. So.
The only thing that remains constant are the uh insurances.
Right.
That's based on a employee selection rather than a salary level.
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
So, hell, go for ten.
Talk it crazy.
I told Jason, because he wasn't here.
We were at two.
I know. Well, I I I told Jason, because he wasn't gonna be here, that it was, we were gonna do twenty percent cola. He said, easy now. Yeah, that's forty grand, that's crazy. Yeah, I don't know, I think it's good.
These tables are excellent.
Amazing.
Like it's just like the see it all, yeah, so that, yeah.
This is, this is. Yeah. Right, because you can see everything.
Yeah, just.
Yeah, what did.
When I was starting to work on that, I said, oh my God, how am I gonna figure this out?
The only thing.
We just took one thing at a time and kept plugging it away and then.
Oh, fire is in there, okay.
Boom. It's like, okay.
Fire's in there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I got nervous for a sec, so, there you go.
And so what's that bottom line? And this is salaries on the right?
Yeah.
So.
So eight percent would be this.
Yeah, that bottom table doesn't calculate, it's just benchmarks.
Right, this, this.
No, eight percent is, that eighteen seventy is what, uh, one point eight seven zero is what we saw before.
Yeah, that's what eight percent, right? I put the eight percent in.
Did you do that before?
Eight percent.
Okay.
Yeah.
What was the default one before you put the eight percent in? Do you remember?
Nope.
Zero, okay.
One point seven six five.
Okay.
Yeah, it was roughly a hundred thousand dollars, it was like ninety. Yeah.
So take about.
A hundred five, yeah, a hundred five.
Thirteen thousand.
Oh, well, there you go, one point seven six five, there's the no COLA. There's with COLA, the eight. On my knees, jeez.
I think we have to be at six minimally. Eight would be on the high end, like, for us.
Yeah.
This is a huge jump. Anyways.
I would say six to six and a half.
What would you say? You get the most staff, right?
Is retirement pre or post tax?
Pre.
Pre-tax. That's an incentive to the employee. If you're looking at combinations.
Yeah.
I'll accept. They'll get that elsewhere, just, they'll get that elsewhere.
And if you don't think that's six or six and a half percent is enough, then you.
If they're thinking about moving, if they're not happy with.
Uh, tack in that hundred percent, um, on the medical, because that's also pre-tax.
Well, I'm sorry, what I was saying was eighty-five percent of the tax bill is borne by the town. If you factor in that additional fifteen percent, figure out what that value is, and then balance that with a percentage on the COLA, that's advantageous to the employee, they don't pay as much taxes.
That's what I'm saying.
And that's what we're looking at, to see what that number was, yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry, never thought that.
You follow what what else?
Yeah, I did, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's more money in the employer's pocket, yeah.
In their pocket.
They may not realize it.
That's the other key to it, is.
No, but that's why the, you sell it, I mean.
But that's.
You may give them the benefit, but they may not appreciate insurance, yeah.
Well, that's true, yeah, maybe that's.
Well, they would when you real, when they realize they don't have to pay anything for the health insurance, I would think. Just say, hey, we're not gonna pay a hundred percent for your health insurance. I think that would make people happy.
I know in conversations, if that is a benefit one hundred percent, it always comes up, right? It's a big point that people go,
Absolutely. Yep.
What, you get a hundred percent? Yeah, wow, that's amazing.
Yep. Right.
But, I mean, and that, it always comes up in conversations.
And a lot of companies used to do that, and then they kinda started going away from it, and now it's starting to come back around again.
Part working.
Because people are trying to keep people, and and not just in municipalities, in every profession.
Yeah. Sure.
'Cause people are, I mean, it's a, it's a employees' market.
We just have to fi-
And you price and go wherever you want, yeah.
It's a neat time for sure.
We just have to figure out how much that's gonna cost us.
Right.
Do you have that fifteen percent built right in the spreadsheet?
No, but what you could do is take the total of the full benefit package and rough it in one time, or times it by one point.
One five.
One five. Give you a close number.
Yep. Go ahead.
You can do that pretty quickly.
We jump on.
Oh, what's the number?
There's almost five, yeah.
How many swallow?
We're not pushing this one. We're gonna figure this out tonight.
We got this spreadsheet, so.
There you go.
Uh, let's see.
Well, that was Mike's spreadsheet, is that the whole thing?
Yeah, that was my.
That's not the whole thing.
Well, I think he's gonna work with a personnel spreadsheet, right?
I'm gonna excuse myself for a couple minutes, yeah.
Uh, go to the personnel spreadsheet, I can, you can get the benefits package from that.
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, he's real good with Excel.
I know.
I'm really good at watching you guys be really good with Excel.
He had a really cool way of naming tables, and I said, that is just awesome. So I picked that up, and I screwed up my spreadsheet, 'cause I couldn't go backwards and take it back, and I left that out, and I'm like, nope.
Ah.
And I start, I probably spent four hours trying to figure out how to get rid of it, and ultimately I deleted it and started over again.
Yeah.
And I asked him, and he go, oh, it's real easy, just do this, and he couldn't do without that, but then that night he went home, but he stayed up for an hour and figured it out, gave me instructions.
Quick question. I I I know the answer about dental and health, but life insurance, that's also an eighty-five percent factor?
No. No.
Or that's a full coverage?
Yep.
All right, we'll subtract then, uh, life. And you're, based on, what was this eight percent you had in there?
Yeah. But they don't want eight percent.
Well, what's the number then?
Although, we're trying to figure out w- um, how much it's gonna cost us to increase from eighty-five percent funding to a hundred percent funding for the health insurance.
Right, right. Yeah, but this is all going to be predicated on what the percentages appear.
Yeah. We're gonna. For COLA?
Yeah.
COLA shouldn't have anything to do with it, 'cause it's a fixed cost.
Not health insurance.
No, no, not doing health.
Yes, we are. That's what we want.
That's what we're talking about.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, you're right, you're right, you're right.
We don't want retirement in there, just health and dental.
Okay. All right. Now I got you.
Yeah.
So. Two hundred seventy-seven thousand oh six five times one point one five. Now, what did I do with my calculator? It is. Two seven seven. Oh, six five. Times one point oh five. Give me. Three hundred eighteen, six twenty-four. What's the difference?
About forty thousand.
Yeah.
So.
That's a ballpark. See, I was thinking you were also looking at the retirement piece of it, that.
No.
That's.
So one percent is thirteen thousand, but if we, if we paid that additional fifteen percent, that's forty thousand dollars? So that's equivalent of a three percent?
I have to recalibrate what you just said.
That's just.
So, like, if you did a six percent COLA and a hundred percent health insurance?
That's what I was thinking.
I was running the numbers while I was walking down the hallway.
So that's about, yeah, about three percent, give or take.
You hit. Walked and calculated.
So.
I think you wrote that, like, those, like, those numbers, it's like, did you know what the, um, like, that, how much the health insurance would cost?
I think these are just options on that.
Mm-hmm.
What did you come to?
Oh, I was just kind of working.
Yeah.
The numbers of what the things would be, and I'm thinking that, yeah, if we go ahead and do the whole thing, and without considering how much
Hmm.
that was going to add to it, and I said that should equate to about six percent.
Hmm, health is not going to help the employee, I mean, just looking at the health benefits alone is not gonna help the employee on tax benefits. If anything, it would increase their income, thus more taxes.
Why not? But yeah, 'cause you're not taking the, 'cause it's pre-tax.
Right. Right.
So is it like, so you're saying that the health value has a roughly a three percent impact?
Yeah, forty thousand, so if you say thirteen thousand per percentage point, and you, and the health is gonna cost forty thousand dollars more, that's about three points, three percentage points.
There. Yeah.
So part-time people aren't gonna get that.
Oh.
Um, and not everybody is elected to have insurance with the town, right?
Yeah, it's only people. Right.
Right.
So they're not gonna see the benefit of that either, only the full-time people that are elected out, and there's two plans too, so then everybody that doesn't have, well, three plan levels.
Right. Three.
Yeah, single plus one and then family.
But this is not a goal, it's a goal.
Right. And there's three, and there's three, three, there's three tiers.
Oh, yeah, there's three tiers as well.
Three tiers, so everybody would get the top tier, if it's free.
I think we all do have the top tier, but we have different plans as far as like, single, plus one, family.
We do.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause there's, there's people that have family plans, and it's costing the town way more money than it is for a single person.
Mm-hmm.
It's almost, I think it's more than double. So that, whoever has a family plan, it has a way higher
So that.
Correct.
wage, if you will.
Yeah, be, I think.
Because they're getting that benefit, even at, even at the eighty-five percent.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it's like, a rough number's like a hundred and five dollars, a hundred and nine dollars a week out of the family plan, so if I, I don't have, I'm just saying, but if you have a family plan right now, I think the employee fifteen percent contribution's somewhere around a hundred and nine dollars a week.
Well, I think it's more than that. I think it's more than that.
I think it's more than that.
Yeah. Well, they, I'd rather put it at five thousand, and then the total cost is around twenty-four for the family, isn't it? The twenty-seven.
Like I said, so I'm paying.
Well, so it's nineteen eighty-six a month for a two-person.
Yeah.
And I think for a family, it's like thirty-five something.
Mm-hmm.
I think, I'm wrong.
So like forty thousand dollars a year?
There was, I think there was one person that had, um, seven members in the family or something.
Doesn't matter. It's.
It's still family, yeah.
Two-person or family, doesn't matter.
Okay.
How many kids you have.
Yeah, you're right.
If you went with a six percent cost of living and you cover the insurance, that comes out to about a nine percent overall, eh, you know, adjustment, right? Um. Maybe I wouldn't wanna look at the health insurance benefit and just say, let's go with seven percent. It's c- costs the town less. Overall benefit may not be quite as good, but it at least we're close to competitive, or maybe we'll make it eight percent as opposed to a one percent. You follow what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause even, even if you did eight percent, it's, the increase is only gonna be twenty-six grand versus forty.
You're complicating it too much. Yeah.
Yeah. And everyone realizes it, not just the people who have health insurance.
Right. It's. Yeah, yeah.
True, yeah.
And then, and then, the people that don't get health insurance may switch to us for health insurance, so they're not paying more.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Could, well, I'd get, hey, if I don't have to pay any health insurance. But I like the idea of everybody benefiting, not just people who have health insurance, as much as I would like my health insurance paid a hundred percent, but I think that's more fair.
One more thing.
Yeah, yeah.
I think that's more fair for everyone.
Yes, I agree with you.
To do a higher COLA than.
Once you change that health insurance, you've helped a real hard time going back to.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Good news is you have a higher pay base. Bad news is you gotta pay more taxes.
More taxes, yeah.
Right. Yep.
Double it, sword.
Yep. So, what you got, boys?
Seven percent, same number I've been at for a long time now, but I think that's where we have to be, um.
So that number would, uh, oop, I'm sorry, I can't see.
Jeez.
Keep tripping on me, Debbie, sorry.
Like squinting to see the screen.
We're not, we're never dancing together.
I I have to apologize, my, my eyes are horrible, so I got it.
No, that's fine. It's fine.
Hundred percent fair, yeah.
Mike, what would be the impact to your department, like, at seven percent? Would that be something that is workable?
Yeah, Joe and I were just having a little side conversation, I think it's fair. I think it's a, I think it's a generous, uh, and fair, um, COLA.
You don't know the exact number of change?
Is that what you're talking about, or just in general?
Well, in general, like if, like the feeling of, you know, uh, your guys, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. I think they, I I, I I think they would be, I think they would think that was generous.
All right, so four?
Yeah.
I still wanna be in a position where we lose too much ground, like we had, uh, previously and had to make that correction a couple years ago, um, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. No, I mean, it's, it's just, it'll, you, the town's doing the right thing, you really have to look very seriously at this.
Retention.
Yeah.
Because it's, it's a, you know, it's just a real, it's a reality that, you know, everybody's facing, and to stay competitive in this market, we're gonna have to offer a competitive COLA and benefits.
We're living in some strange times.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is, uh, I wouldn't believe it if you told me two years ago this, and we would be sitting.
Right.
A lot of towns are influencing people.
And my fear is. Right. My fear is town office and DPW. I mean, at least they're getting incentives on that, on the other end of stuff. You know what I mean?
No.
Education and.
Oh, yeah.
All of that stuff.
Yeah.
Which, I mean, and I'm not, I'm not.
Oh, no, no, I.
You have to, you have to do it, but I just, um, scared.
Yeah, no.
You're scared?
Yeah.
You're scared of what?
I I just, uh, losing people.
Oh, yeah, I agree with you.
And having, having to start over and hire people and be without people.
Well.
I can't do it anymore.
Cost of recycling to new people is a lot more expensive than maintaining it.
Correct.
And experienced staff.
Yeah.
So it would've definitely been easier without the trying times on top of it, um, we'll try to address some of things, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I know, I know, I know, and that's the, uh, like I've been saying all along, where is that fine line?
Yeah, well, that's, that's.
Because, I mean, employees can go anywhere and pretty much name that price.
And we've lost a couple of employees already.
Already, right.
Yeah, the only, the only other thing that I'd really like to see is, um, and that would affect COLA increases in the future, is to have a merit increase.
So.
Whole other conversation, but, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we're not talking about that today. We need to get the COLA to finish China.
Yeah, yeah, no, but this is like for the future.
'Cause that's, that's a next level, so the, the way I look at COLA is baseline increases every year.
Yeah. Okay.
Right.
Okay, yeah.
And it'd be good to have that next step, but that's something, um, that I think we had at one point, but then they switched over to COLA,
Right.
and then there was this melding of the two, where they actually would use COLA as.
As the merit.
Merit as well, that everybody, they would call it COLA, and then some people would get four, and some people would get two percent.
Yeah. Right.
So, but that's, we're redefining go, COLA as, if we call it COLA, it's across the board.
Like, we got two and a half percent.
Oh, okay, that's fine, yeah, so let's call it.
Yeah.
Yeah. We got like two and a half percent.
Yeah, we're not gonna play with those numbers.
And to have merit, you have to have performance standards in place, if you have to measure it.
Well, you have to, you have to play a performance review.
Yeah. Side conversation.
You have to measure it, yeah.
Yeah.
COLA.
Yeah, so.
Rain it.
Okay, rain it at COLA. All right, so.
I'll make a, I don't know if I have to make a motion, but I'll make a motion to set our COLA rate at seven percent. Is there a second?
I'm waiting for it to finish writing. I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
All right, so COLA's set, now I can, yeah, we can just plug that right in, uh.
COLA's set. Seven percent.
To the sheet, to the, to the table.
Seven.
All right, 'cause all.
We'll have to update the master, but.
Everything else depends on this.
Yeah, so that's, yeah, from that master, yeah, now we can work a little bit more with some clarity, like of what the impacts are gonna be, the actual impacts.
Now we can move on. Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Um, so we might be relooking at some of the number twos.
Too late.
Too late, you already ran the table.
All right, cool, so, uh, moving on.
Moving on.
So we're gonna kinda get resituated here. We'll open up the sylloscope stuff for Collins Road.
Can take that.
Uh, do we need to be here on this one?
No.
No, 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 uh, you can, uh.
We do, do we? Ladies and gentlemen.
All right, thank you for coming in.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, guys, appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, honest, yeah, thank you, Dennis, Joe, Mike, yeah.
Thank you.
So, uh, do we schedule for the other departments? How are we gonna handle that?
Oh, yeah, that's right.
We're looking at highway next week.
And town office.
Okay.
And town office.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, there's two big, big ones.
Yeah.
That would need to be transferred and.
We should get together some time soon.
Yeah.
And, uh.
Yeah, I got, I have a few changes.
Government buildings.
Yeah, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
General government buildings.
Too cheapish.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
You've done.
Thank you so much, guys, appreciate it.
You wanna hit that switch loop?
Sure.
Um, so. The five-minute break, was that like a fresh air break, or?
Uh, fresh air, get a beverage, and get you a letter opener to open this.
So I'll forego the letter opener and, um, get a cut, paper cut.
Okay. Okay.
And if we can, like, forego that whole. And if we can like forego that whole five, actually turn into ten minute break, let's just move through this stuff, cause there's no decisions to be made on any of these. We're just opening them.
Ah, okay.
No, there yeah, there's nothing. Like here, cause the road committee's gonna make decisions tomorrow. So we're just opening them tonight, um ahead of the road committee meeting.
Oh. My model.
And then they'll make a recommend well, cause it's we're on camera.
Oh.
It's sealed bids, set for tonight, the big show.
Gotcha. Okay.
And then uh the community will know what the road committee's looking at tomorrow, um and what they're, you know, and then they'll make a recommendation to the select board for the following.
Alright, I just need to get some water though. Water, get give a cut.
Yeah. Alright, so the first one I'm gonna open up is from Daniel's Construction.
This is from what?
The Collins Road uh civil scope stuff to finish off the other half.
Oh, okay. Yep.
Of Collins to get it uh prepped for pavement um ahead of the next year's paving cycle.
Okay, well, I guess um what's the scope of that work? I don't remember seeing.
Um.
They were going to fill in the the valley area a bit more, put a culvert in or something. Or was that already done?
Yeah, well, it's all prepped for pavement. So that's yeah, it's all the prep work.
Okay, that's right. Yeah.
Um so that our guys don't have to do that. Typically what we would do, like or the highway department would do, tire it out.
Okay. Mm-hmm.
You know, so that'd be the culverts and the the drainage, like all the infrastructure stuff.
But they did that already.
And preparing the base. No, they didn't do it on the other end.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Alright.
Who was the first company?
Daniel's Construction.
Okay.
Uh their total bid uh came in at one hundred and ninety eight thousand dollars, one hundred and ninety eight thousand five hundred dollars, sorry.
Okay.
Uh Accura Construction. We're really taking serious, sealing these suckers up.
Alright.
And also an extra tee.
Nobody's opening the lines.
Tie that.
Sorry.
Thank you. Uh Accura Construction came in at a hundred and seventy seven thousand five hundred and ten dollars. C S S I uh out of Bedford. Let me jab myself. Like a butter knife. Came in at two hundred and fifty four thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. And that's Connie Septic Service Incorporated. DBA C S S I.
Connie, like Connie?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I'd be able to read it off this.
Oh, we got quite a few.
Yeah, we got seven. I was surprised.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
We got none last time.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
Well, the timeframe was.
Do you think it was the time of year?
Yeah. Now everybody like this is the proper time for something like this.
Well, they're not, yeah, they're not gonna be doing um caving this time of the year, uh yeah.
Well, this isn't for pavement. It's site work. So and we have um some money set aside so that potentially this could get done.
But for the uh. Okay.
Yeah. Alright, so this is from Diggs, D I G Z. Their bid came in at two hundred thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars. Next one. S U R Construction West Inc. Two hundred and five thousand seven hundred and twenty five dollars. Um next one is from Jennings Excavation Inc. One hundred and sixty five thousand four hundred and ninety seven dollars and thirty cents. And. Finally, from C R Demmer's Construction. Uh around two hundred and sixty five thousand dollars. And so thank thank everyone uh for taking the time to bid on the civil scope work. Um I'll be bringing these to the road committee um
That's a big gap.
tomorrow afternoon at three o'clock uh for further discussion and then a recommendation to the select board uh for next Tuesday evening.
Do you want me to make copies of all of them for each member?
Yes, yeah, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Alright, and next up we have the twenty twenty three holiday schedule.
Still waiting. Okay. So I gave you guys the um the state and the federal holidays.
Yeah.
We usually do ten with two floaters, right?
Yeah. Yeah, so does this holiday schedule fall in line with the current?
The state one?
Yeah, that's what we follow.
No.
Usually.
Yeah.
We usually follow the I would think that uh yeah, it's a federal ones got a couple of extra days in there.
Yeah.
Alright, so I'll make a motion to accept the uh state of New Hampshire's holiday calendar uh for the town of New York's which uh for twenty twenty three. Um the only um change is that for the state they give three floating holidays, but for our town it's two. Is there a second?
No, there's actually a difference between um than about um Columbus Day.
Yeah, the feds give Columbus Day in Juneteenth and the state doesn't.
Yeah.
So so we have the floating holidays uh for people.
Right, so if you wanna take that off.
Okay, I'll s- um we're going with the state, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I go I'll second that.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Jason's probably home watching.
Hello, hey, Jay.
Hey, Jay.
Alright. Cause I did have some old new business. Do you have any old new business?
Um sorta ish. Um I got a quote and I did not bring it with me for the cloud-based storage, but that was including the police and us, so maybe it'll be cheaper if I tell them Mike already has his. I don't know why he included that in there, but. Um I think it was a higher security-based um storage, maybe? I'm not sure. So forget that.
Okay.
Forget I said it.
Alright.
Um. I'm putting in everyone's payroll this week for um that we can do electronic W twos. So I'm putting in a so they have to I had to write up this whole big thing and there has to be certain criteria in it, letting them know that like all these different things from the IRS. I have to make them aware that they can request a paper W two at any time and like this whole thing. Anyway, so I created that form and everyone can sign it, give me their email that they wanna send it to. And then there's an or, I wish to receive a paper one and sign that. So that's gonna go on everybody's payroll this week. Um I think that's about it for now.
Alright.
And that is the City of Keens recycling thing that we participate in every uh it's like eight grand.
Alright.
I think we usually do a warrant article for it. But it has to be signed. And I have to send in the background check for the new employee for the accounting position, so those will get mailed out tomorrow. Um oh yeah, so I'm gonna need you guys to come in at some point tomorrow to sign the manifest, cause I ran out of time and didn't get to print the checks.
Okay.
Today. Partially because being as I was down, crashed for yesterday and most of today. So that was done.
Yeah, I still have to do my turn in for um go um um electronic uh deposit.
Your direct deposit? Well, you didn't get it in this payroll?
Yeah. No, that's right.
Okay.
Um yeah, so keep this, cause that goes with the warrant article stuff.
I think that would make sense. Yeah, but we have to sign it and send it back to them too, right?
By January thirteenth, but we have to once we sign up for it, we're gonna have to pay for it, right? So we have to decide on like how many did are we gonna do all twenty four dates or are we just gonna do half the schedule?
Uh. Uh I think we usually do spring and fall.
Alright, yeah, so I just wanna look at it instead of yeah, go on it. Just be sure of what we've done.
Okay. Okay.
Alright. Uh Lou, did you have anything old new?
Um no, well, I've got a couple things. Oh, one is that there was also a um and this is new new news first. Um there was an email that came out about um uh the state um is looking to um for acceptance from a budding towns or nearby towns for the recycle center that's happening over in um in Greenville. Did you guys get that?
I don't think so.
No, I'm not missing that.
Okay, I'll I could send you.
Wouldn't that be wouldn't we get something in the mail from as in a butter?
Um I don't know, but basically um I guess my guess is that maybe Shaw's is building that building right there by um Meadows for More or whatever they call it nowadays.
Yeah.
And that's supposed to be their recycling center where they're going to process everything.
Yeah.
And they were looking for um the state is prior to giving them the license for it to go ahead with it. That they were looking for input from surrounding communities. So I didn't know if we had anything to say about that.
Well, we can close out transfer station, have everybody go there.
Alright.
Probably work.
Yeah.
Might be cheaper.
Yeah, yeah. Alright, yes, we'll have to look for that, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, send that out, please. I don't remember seeing that.
I think was it an email I got or in the paper? Cause I remember a news article about it, but I didn't get an email.
I got s- uh I I got something. I don't remember that.
It sounds vaguely familiar, but I don't remember. I would think if we were in a butter, cause.
Yeah, we would have been contacted directly.
We would have uh with a certified letter.
Cause I think it was just last night when I was um reading the ledger email that comes through, like that was in there.
I mean.
That was in there, but that it could have been a result of that same thing that I got.
Yeah, yeah.
And it could have been coming from the Southwest Regional Product Hub or I think it was from Concord.
Okay, alright.
Okay.
But uh was it D uh DES or something?
Okay.
Um. I I I broke the rules on um Saturday over at the transfer station.
Fine.
And I sat down with um Bert Hamel and had um let's catch up on what we haven't um uh been talking about for the last four months or so. And one of the things, um he mentioned that he uh did take the position of being the um of working for the planning board as uh their engineer for um for that uh for um for whatever word that's coming from there. Um the other thing he did was he um had concerns about um that New Hampshire has been coming out with a whole lot of new rules and they're looking for um uh more of a sign off and more control from the local people um to determine, you know, like if septic systems are being laid in properly, if you know, if they're being cited properly, et cetera, et cetera. Um and it seems that the background story to that was that about five to seven years ago, um the state was very well um staffed with people who had a lot of experience um in that type of thing. And they would, it wasn't necessary for the town to do a whole lot uh other than to ensure that it's within certain um wetland set setbacks and uh certain distance away from the wells and you know, the normal stuff that they do. Um however, they replaced all those people um as they retired with new graduates from uh the college. From colleges, these people don't have any experience and they're real busy and they're backed up several months, you know, ten weeks or more to um uh to ver- verify or to sign off on on um uh permits. And as such, uh there's just a whole lot of things where things are being just pushed through to get rid of the paperwork and being signed off without really going through all of the inspections. So one of the things that I did just now after our meeting over on Timber Top Road was talk to uh Jim and uh ask him how comfortable he was with it. And I and I had mentioned that, you know, should we think about hiring an um external um engineering firm to maybe take off take some of those things that I don't know how. To maybe take off, take some of those things that, I don't know how well-versed Jim is on um, you know, with um, septic systems and such. As the um, uh, code enforcement officer. So uh, he says he feels real comfortable because of his um, background with it. But he wouldn't mind having um, you know, somebody else take that load off of him. Um, come next summertime so he can do further concentration on uh, the other stuff, um, you know, with electrical plumbing, et cetera, et cetera.
Cause so right now, we do require local approval for location.
Correct.
Of the septic system, but we don't get into the design of the system.
Correct.
Um, so what you had mentioned was that the state was looking for the local governments to.
Start doing more of that.
Not the design, but you had mentioned the location.
Yeah.
Well, not only location, but just every, make sure that everything was within setbacks because at the state.
Well, that that's location.
That's what we have.
That's okay, that's location, yeah.
Right, so, and we do do that right now, like the location part, yeah.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
You can install a septic system without the state approval.
That's true, but the state right now is so busy that they're just signing them without really look over, to looking at them.
Which is good, cause they, we just had a case where the state said, hey, the se- there's not in the spot that it should be in, and then. We went out and verified that it was okay where it was at and then they signed off on it. So they came back to us before like signing off on the design.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just because they do check the location as well.
That could be the one that um, that Bert was talking about, where he said that, yeah, he just recently did one and reviewed it.
The nine seven.
And it wasn't great.
Where is it?
But it was, um, but it was okay.
Yeah.
Meaning that it was kind of borderline.
Mm.
So, um, I I took it upon myself to give um, uh, um, company up in Bedford a call. And uh, you know, ask them some information of, you know, where they do for small towns and stuff.
Mm-hmm.
And they admitted to me that they've concentrated on places um, east, west and north of Bedford. And haven't really done much down here to the south. However, the guy there, Steve was his name, forget his last name, had mentioned that um. Um, they had applied for the job uh, with the planning board. And they res- they had recently received a letter saying that, uh, thanks but no thanks, we've got somebody else, which happened to be Bert.
Mm.
Um, so. I was just gonna throw out, do, you know, for things like, I had also heard that um. Um, two more things, is that uh, at one point Peter had said that he was looking at somebody to look at Collins Road and. Kinda give them some idea of what needed to be done over there, this was a while back. And um, two, uh, Bert has also mentioned to me that um, he is real busy working down in Boston. And if he needed to take on more, it might be um, eight to ten week lead time before he could get to it.
Peter met with, I believe it was Bert yesterday.
Peter met with Bert.
At Collins Road, either today or yesterday.
Um, okay, cause that's fine.
Yes.
So what's that in regards to?
To find out exactly where we, where our property is basically.
So.
Mm-hmm.
Because they were worried about that corner and he didn't wanna do anything if we didn't own it. So, there was a question of where the, I.
With which corner?
Uh, we had to ask him.
Cause we already did the big corner project and the, like our property, not our property stuff came up.
Yeah, nobody, there was no one who started any of it.
Two years ago. Yeah, but it's already all done, like it's.
Yeah, it's not, whatever he's talking about isn't done.
Oh, so it's on the other end?
Possibly, uh, you'd have to talk to him, I don't wanna tell you the wrong information.
Cause he hasn't said anything during the road committee.
Yeah, he did.
Did he?
Mm. Yeah, I'm sure he did.
Hmm.
Yeah, so anyways, Peter did meet with Bert.
Okay, so anyway, so.
Yeah, it's all set.
You know, whatever other engineering jobs that uh, may be needed by um, uh, uh, for the town outside of the planning board.
Yeah.
Um, you know, they would be happy to uh, consider taking that load or giving us a hand with what whatever we needed. And the name of the company I was looking, talking to was Keach and Nordstrom.
Okay. Alright, so that was um, something that we had discussed as a planning board was reaching out to those bigger companies. Cause there were some larger companies that applied for um. The uh, planning board engineer position.
Keach and Nordstrom was one of them, they're not that big of a company, cause there's only twenty-six employees there.
Well, it's much larger than Bert, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's a large company, yeah.
And also a little bit larger than.
I know on the global end of it, there was a company that had eleven hundred employees.
Yeah. Right.
But still twenty-six is larger than, so it's so it's a large company.
One. Right, right.
Uh, but utilizing one of those firms for bigger topics like that and that, um, but for what we needed.
Mm-hmm.
Um, for planning board services was more towards like Bert's end of things.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um. Alright.
I just wanted to throw that out there that I had spoken to somebody and.
Yeah.
Got some input on it.
So what's the breaking the rules part?
Oh, about, remember how we talked about that uh, the transfer station turns into be a, a meeting room for people who haven't seen each other in a while?
Yeah. Did you parkway over?
And they take up a parking spot.
Oh yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you didn't take a parking spot, you you parked over by the telephone.
I I we took two parking spots, cause I was parked right next to Bert.
But you didn't pull over to the telephone poles?
Now you broke the rules.
I broke the rules.
Alright.
Fired.
Cause I was trying to figure out like.
Yeah.
What did I miss?
That's the rule that I broke.
That was the one that. Alright. Cool. Um, I had something for old new and at this point. There's nothing pressing, so uh, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Oh yeah.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.